Testing for YouTube, one, two, three. Testing for YouTube, one, two, three.
And when it's red, then it's on.
All right.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We will call to order our committee of the whole meeting. And I'd like to start by recognizing and acknowledging that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is on the unceded territories of the Hupacheset and Sichot First Nations. I'll just acknowledge that we do have Councillor Petola joining us virtually, and Councillor Solder has signed on as well. So two councillors online and four of us in the room today. Councillor Dame is away. We do have an agenda. Are there any late items to add from our corporate officer?
No late items, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any late items from council? Seeing none, would somebody like to move approval of our agenda? Moved. Councillor Mealy, seconded by Councillor Haggar. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And we'll move on to adoption of minutes. We have minutes from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on October 20th, 2025, as presented. Moved to adopt by Councillor Mealy, seconded by Councillor Haggar. Any comments on the minutes? Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. And I can see your face now, Councillor Solder. Welcome online. All right, we'll move on to public input period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the committee. Up to six speakers for up to five minutes each can be accommodated. And for anyone participating electronically, just use the raise your hand feature if you would like to speak today. Would any members of the public in the room like to speak? Come on forward. And if you don't mind, just push the button, just turn on the microphone, and then just introduce yourself, please.
All right. Good evening. Okay, sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jayden Rowley, and I would like to speak about something that's been discussed extensively already, which is the temporary use permit for Bread of Life that expired back in September. I'm here to voice my strong support for Bread of Life and the amazing work that they do to make our community a better place. I say this as someone who has no affiliations with the Salvation Army or other related groups, merely someone from the community who has witnessed firsthand that this temporary service is one of the keystones in our community's efforts to reduce poverty and homelessness, and to give everyone a space to feel welcome. I've only been inside the Bread of Life once. I was just getting home one day and saw someone who looked like they might need help just next to my house. I asked what they needed, and they asked if I could drop them off at Bread of Life. So they got in my car and off we went. When we arrived, the staff knew this person by name, and it really seemed like he was being welcomed home. He wasn't just another face needing assistance. He was part of a community that takes a holistic approach to care and support. Bread of Life was extremely clean, the food smelled amazing, and the heart of the staff radiated. I could fully understand why this man needing a ride wanted to be brought here. I had an office at Third and Bird for a few years and would commute by bike past the Bread of Life every day. I understand to some extent what complainants are concerned with, garbage, noise, perhaps feeling unsafe. What I don't understand, however, is how the Bread of Life has become the scapegoat for this issue when they're the only member of that locale that is exacting meaningful, positive change to the disadvantaged. How is it that amongst a nuisance residence, a business that has lost their liquor license multiple times, and another business whose owner was shaking with anger when the permit was approved back in 2022, the Bread of Life comes out as the culprit? My knowledge about the TUP is that it's only in response to emergency response. I cannot comprehend how anyone can think that 25 beds in a safe, clean, secure, sober site that is only available in emergency situations can possibly be the root cause of constant disturbances in Uptown. After listening to council sessions from the past couple of months and reviewing statements made by the city, the feeling I'm left with is that gentrification of an area with business potential takes precedence over the lives and futures of our most disadvantaged members. This is perhaps apparent, and that's some councillors opposed to extending the Bread of Life's permit have personal interest in Uptown and have not declared this conflict. I don't need to say anything more about that. But like others have said, without Bread of Life's shelter capacity, that's 25 more locals in our community without a home at a time when homelessness has increased in Port Alberni from 125 in 2021 to 180 in 2025. This is an increase of 44% or 11% annually. Surely, removing the vital services that our community relies on, the ones that are committed to making Port Alberni a better place to live, is not the path to a healthy city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We always like to welcome people who don't regularly come to council meetings. Appreciate you getting engaged, but thank you very much for your well-written and thoughtful comments on this as well. Really appreciate it. Are there other members of the community who would like to speak today? Come on forward. Oh. Councillor Petola, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, but I'm content to wait until the end of the public speakers, if that's better.
All right, we will go to the gentleman at the mic.
My name is Bob East. I'm with the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society. And I'm just wondering why you're maintaining on the 2030 Plan demolish the Heritage Centre. And we have had ongoing meetings with city staff and continue, hopefully continue on. We've committed and spent considerable amount of money already this year on engineering to support to the city to have another look at what that agreement said. And I'm just wondering why we have to retain that demolition, because if it's hanging out there, it raises more questions than it does support for seeing what it's about.
Thank you, Bob. Completely understand. And I would imagine that the reason, I know that this will be spoken about in the report, but I would imagine that the reason is there hasn't been a formal change of direction from council yet. That said, I know it is an item of discussion, and I know that council did send staff to work with the society on next steps and learn more about the building. So from our perspective, that work is underway, conversations are ongoing. The budget just gets presented in the most recent form of the budget. So how it's presented today is not an indication of any further decision being made, and certainly not an indication that it actually will be torn down at that date. And I know that our manager, when we get to that point, will certainly be answering questions from council and making comments on that as well. So appreciate you bringing it today.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who'd like to speak today? Okay. Councillor Petola, you wanted to make your comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I realize that I've only been a member of the community since 1995, and that's only 30 years. But I'd like to say that in that 30 years, when I first moved to Port Alberni, it was referred to as the community with a heart. And I have never, not one day in those last 30 years, seen any evidence to the contrary. I'm very proud that we have citizens that come forward to support compassionate activities and neighborly activities, such as those that occur at the Bread of Life and through the Salvation Army. I am a little concerned that people may have the wrong information. And there seem to be a lot of letters of support and effort being put into supporting the Salvation Army. I don't think that council has ever said anything against the great work of the Salvation Army. I don't think that the information about the meals that are provided and the support provided at the Bread of Life has ever been called into question. I think those are all parts of our community that are necessary, and they are what makes Port Alberni the community with a heart. Although I'm also concerned about some of the information that people are basing, not basing their comments on, but information that is prompting people to come forward and feel like they need to make comments, such as the Bread of Life is the only shelter in the community. It's not. There are three overnight shelters available in our community, and there are other shelters as well that are not necessarily in the overnight status, but still provide shelter to those who need shelter. The Bread of Life provides a necessary and needy food source for many people. It is not the only one. So I say these things not because we don't need the services they provide. And in fact, we are very blessed to have multiple service providers. As one that works within the service community would know, sometimes one service provider is not a good fit for an individual. And multiple service providers cover off the unfortunate occurrences of personal grievances that might occur, and ensure that all individuals that need service get that.
Councillor Petola, I just want to, I want to stop you, because I understand that a member of the public did make, you know, comments about the Bread of Life, but council will have opportunity to discuss the specific application further. So I, you know, I let your comments go on in case they were specifically in reference to that, but they're sounding more generally, you know, to do with the debate that council will have when the item comes back to us. So if there's anything additional that you wanted to add that is sort of in, you know, response to the comment that was made, as council does, you know, occasionally make comments after public input. But I don't want to, you know, I don't want us to enter into a debate on the specific issue tonight, as that's not the intent of this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. I, no debate here whatsoever. All I, I'll summarize that then. I just would like the public to know that some of these statements made are not correct, that council hasn't taken any negative positions against the Bread of Life. Council has a strong record of being supportive of all services to all citizens of our community. And when helpful comments are made, I certainly value the compassion that people bring forward, the citizens' commitment, which is the same as council's commitment to their citizens. And I hope that all those comments will be based on some agreed basis of facts, so we can all move forward in an equitable basis.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councillor Petola. Okay. Not seeing any additional comments from members of the public, we will move on to delegations. Our first delegation today is from the Ministry of Transportation and Transit, and I believe joining virtually. Okay, I can see Michael Pearson here. I will turn it over to you. Welcome, and thanks so much for coming today.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for having me. Yeah, just for introductions, I'm Mike Pearson. I'm the Director for Vancouver Island District with the Ministry of Transportation. And I'm here tonight to speak to about Cathedral Grove, and this is in a response to a letter that was sent to Minister Farnworth back in May of this year. And I apologize for it taking me so long to get here, but with wildfire and everything else that's going on, it's been a busy summer. So I believe the request was really just, what are the ministry's long-term plans for Cathedral Grove? And, and in short, the ministry doesn't have a long-term plan for Cathedral Grove. You may recall, a couple of years ago, in 2018, we began public consultation about parking lot improvements as well as pedestrian overpass within the park. That project was shelved a few years ago, just given at the time. And, and so since then, the ministry has sort of continued to monitor what's going on at the park, and we all know the issue quite well. Earlier this year in January, we, we installed concrete barriers along the shoulders of the highway where there was existing no parking areas. And so we've hardened that so that now 200 meters on either side of the parking lot from where you are, where it is, there's no, there's physically now a barrier in place that you cannot park on the shoulder of the road. So by no means does that solve the problem. Certainly, it's helped, I think, in terms of reducing the congestion and a bit of the chaos that goes on at the parking area itself. But I recognize that that does not solve the problem, and there's certainly more to be done. But anything more to be done is within the park, and that's outside of my jurisdiction and my ability to, to resolve. So, so outside of being able to explore options for a parking area within the park or near to the park, the Ministry of Transportation has to continue to manage the safety on the highway. So that's, that's my very short description of what we've been doing. And, and just to reiterate, beyond what we've done earlier this year, there's no immediate plans for any, any further works. So happy to take any questions on that, if there is any.
Thank you very much. I'll go to Councillor Solder.
Welcome to council meeting. I was waiting for you, you knew that. So at the last transportation meeting, you had alluded, Michael, to that there was going to be no more further work, and, which is not really good enough. I think that we need to really move forward on doing something. Somebody's going to get killed there. As you know, you travel that road, too. People are backing up, campers or motorhomes are backing up and trying to back out of there sometimes, and they stop the whole traffic. And of course, if people aren't paying attention when they're driving, somebody stops, bang, you know, they, they hit another car. And that's come close, and we see it on social media all the time, like I nearly hit. I stopped, somebody nearly hit me because they weren't paying attention. You know, like, and, and back in the day, they were going to do something, but then again, there was that whole protest with the trees and stuff like that. But I believe also that people are visiting Vancouver Island even more. And so our tourists is going, are going through that grove, and it's getting harder and harder. And, you know, I would love to, I know the government has put a stop on, on their budget, and they're being very cautious now. But cautious is somebody's life, and I also really believe that we need to go further. I don't know if we need to take it further to talk to the minister in person, go to Victoria, have that dialogue, or who do we talk to? And how do we move forward? What would you suggest? And also, I know you're talking about, I'll wait till Cathedral Grove is finished being talked about, but I would also like to talk about Johnson Road, too, Madam Mayor, if I could ask questions after. Thank you.
So I appreciate the comment, and I would agree that there's more to be done, at least on the highway side, that can be done. But more on the highway would, would involve more probably of the same. And that's not to say it can't be done. I think that should be done thoughtfully, though, in terms of I could continue to put more, to restrict parking along the shoulder of the highway and, and restrict it more. I think that's going to have an impact, obviously, on, on visitation. So there's definitely options, and I think we can, we're happy to explore those. And I don't think you have to go to the minister. I mean, you're always welcome to, of course, but I think at, at this level, we can certainly look at things that I can manage on, on the highway itself, as again, not getting into building new parking lots, though.
Thank you. Councillor Mealy.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson, for appearing tonight, taking time out of your schedule. Really appreciate that. And so, and my first question, sorry, and I apologize, there's a bit of a volume issue here. Did I, did I hear you correctly in saying that any further work in the grove is not going to be under your division? Did I get that right? I'm sorry.
That's correct. So there's, there's sort of two parts there. I can manage what's along the highway, but I cannot manage what's inside the park itself. That's BC Parks.
So, so any, any issues we have with the grove at this point in between the parks, we should be CCing them or CCing you when we talk to them? Is that how we should be doing it? Just want to make sure we're clear on the process. I want to make sure we're talking to the right people.
Yes, of course. I think it would be great if we're both talking to Ministry of Transportation and DC Parks for any, any discussions about improvements.
Wonderful, thank you. And I just, and I do, I don't want to take Councillor Solder's thunder away from her, but I did want to talk about Lower Johnson within the community. So we do have a new overhead, overhead crosswalk sign and a new crosswalk with bump outs at Adelaide and Johnson. We're very thankful and appreciate the, the ministry for investing in the safety in our community. However, I will say, when I However, I will say when I started on council, we've, this community, the city's done a lot of work with pedestrian controlled crosswalks. And that one, under my impression, was supposed to be much like the crosswalk three blocks up at Johnson, Ian, Princess and Southgate. Where it is pedestrian controlled. There is a lot of accidents and a lot of pedestrian hit on that area. And we did not get a pedestrian controlled crosswalk there. So I was just wondering, is that something that can be added to that intersection? And, and I say this with respect, I would love to see those at Margaret and Elizabeth when the ministry does do that. Just because we want to get it right the first time and without having lights at those intersections. It is a major issue within our community and people still get hit every year. So is there something that we can do to ensure that that's a pedestrian controlled crosswalk light? And that the future construction on the Lower Johnson has those pedestrian control? Even if the city, I mean, even if you, you'd like us to provide the lights, I mean, we could, we could come to a deal or something. I just think there are, those, the lights are needed at those intersections and we really need to get on those before, at least next summer. Or the next time we do construction there. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you for the question. And so, yeah, the, the improvements we did at Adelaide this year. They were, they were done in, in consultation with the city staff and then part of, part of a larger planning initiative there. And it was really the first, the first stab at, at these intersections and these crosswalks. As you probably saw, if you were driving by when we were constructing, it's quite the investment to, to redo the drainage, the asphalt, the, the bump out curves. As well as the lighting itself. So part of that was, we were, for us, it was just getting that completed this year. In terms of the flashing beacons, that is certainly something we've already talked about with your staff. And something that we can look at doing in our new fiscal. So that would be April, in, in April, spring.
Thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pearson was just recently at the regional district meeting. And the Chair of the Regional District has met with the new Chair of the NIMU Regional District about Cathedral Grove. And they were going to do some joint letters together. And I suggested they include the City of Port Alberni on that. So I don't know if the city has received anything. If not, I could certainly follow up with the Chair and the CEO from the Regional District. Okay, so look, nobody's shaking their head, so I'll follow up with them and make sure that we get, send a joint letter with our concerns with Cathedral Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Solder.
There I am. Okay. So Counselor Mealy has basically said what I wanted to say regarding Johnson Road. But I also want to ask, there was supposed to be another bump out, put out by the Fish and Chips. And just, you know, just a block down. So I'm wondering if that's still a go. My other concern regarding the bump outs and not, I, I believe they also work. But again, when people are crossing the road, you can't see with the traffic backed up, right? And I also feel that with the roundabout going in, that traffic is going to be worse next year. Because there's that 50-minute delay and people are going to be lined up. We already have that lineup happening. And I'm just wondering if you're going to go ahead or the ministry is still going to go ahead with the, the second bank bump up? That bump out that was supposed to be there. But I still want to talk about Cathedral Grove, Charles. Counselor Mealy just went ahead. But I just, I'll wait for you to answer that. And Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, if I go back to Cathedral Grove for a moment.
Okay. So on, on Johnson, I think you believe you're speaking to the crosswalk at Elizabeth. So that was identified as well. We wanted to do Adelaide first because it was sort of the first, the first crosswalk as you kind of come into the, the core area there. So we don't have an immediate plan to do it, but we have been discussing it. And you may recall our last planning report from 2020. It's available online if, if you're inclined and interested. And in that report, there's three different options for sort of that, the section between Helen and, and River Road. And part of why we have been cautiously investing in this section is. We wanted to understand, is it bump outs that is the ultimate solution? We know that there's a desire for bike lanes as well. And maybe an opportunity to close up the, or narrow up the corridor in other ways to redistribute the, the space. So certainly we could proceed with, with Elizabeth. And I think we could make that, you know, we could start designing that next year. But I think part of this is also that planning question. Is that the direction we want to go with this section? Or, or should we consider other cross-section options for that section?
So if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, so if you're going to put, I know.
Go ahead.
Bike lanes, thank you. Bike lanes on Elizabeth. But are you talking about also putting bike lanes on Johnson Road? Because that would take some of the parking away too.
I think on that, Counselor Solder, I, I think on that. I, I think that our council needs to have a discussion about, like probably a review of the plan that was done in 2020. Because only three of us on, on council now were on that council and have formally received and, and provided comment on it. So my comment was going to be that I think that, you know, a next step here is not that we just push for Elizabeth to be done. But rather our council review with input from staff. And, you know, we've updated our own streetscapes and street standards since that 2020 report was done as well. So I'd love to hear our staff's input on that compared with what we're currently doing and make a recommendation to us. And then council maybe have, you know, a formal endorsement. And we make a recommendation on what our preference is. If we would like just Elizabeth done with bump outs or if we'd like to work with the ministry on that fuller extent of Lower Johnston Road being redone. So, you know, appreciate the conversation today. I think we just don't have quite enough information as a council to have the discussion about. What we would collectively like to work with the ministry on going forward at this point in time. But I think it's a really important discussion. We obviously have identified Lower Johnston Road in several of the intersections several years ago for needing updates. We appreciated that the ministry worked with us on putting that plan together. And then, of course, we all collectively agreed that the roundabout was the priority to proceed with. So now that that roundabout is, is getting going and thanks for all the work going on, on that. Now that that is, you know, underway, I think that we can certainly move on to the next steps. And I just want to make sure that we circle back to it in a really informed way. And make sure that council really considers the options before we, we ask the ministry to go one way or the other. Counselor Solder, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, Michael, that's okay on, on that one. But I would like to go to, back to Cathedral Grove in that area. There was discussion about putting more signs or some sign, signage up. And will the ministry be going, going ahead with that? And also the rumble strips. I call it the rumble strips down where the rocks are. Are you ever going to fix that? There's a lot of people that have mentioned that or is that just there until it kind of fades away? I don't know how that works, but.
So the signs at Cathedral, that's, I think, something I'm happy to discuss. Again, putting signs in will, will either restrict parking or restrict people crossing the highway. And I'm not suggesting that's a bad idea. It's just, it's something that we need to sort of make sure we're all in agreement on. Because it will impact how people use the park. But certainly we can discuss and if we need to, we can, we can implement those easily enough. It's just, I don't want to do that in isolation, that's all. And then the rumble strips in the rocks where the, you're thinking of at Angel Rock? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so that is a very tricky section along Cameron Lake. We need, we would need to, because of the wildfire, we had to push the barrier out for rock catchment. With the new hazard of debris fall, fall. And so to address that, we're going to actually have to rebuild and widen the section of highway. That's a pretty big undertaking and we are looking at it right now. But it, it would be, it will be a while yet before we get to that project.
Okay, well, at least you're looking at it and it's, it's a good start anyways. And I thank you very much. I won't ask about the roundabout yet. But I just want to remind the public on December 16th at 1:30, the Transportation Committee will have another meeting. So you can join in line, live stream through the CRD. So anybody interested in that? So, and you will be there, right, Michael? Or are you on holidays?
No, no, I'll be there.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Solder. Counselor Petola, did you have any comments?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Okay. Well, thank you, Michael, for coming. And, you know, I know that we haven't even addressed the, the topic of alternative routes and emergency routes. As that's primarily happening at the Regional District where myself and Counselor Haggard sit as directors. And of course, Counselor Solder sits as a member of the Transportation Committee representing the city. So I know that there is much more discussion, of course, that, you know, needs to continue there and, and some progress being made. Thanks, Counselor Solder, for providing the date for that next meeting. It is a public meeting. So members of the public are able to sign on and, and watch that meeting online. And I think that as a commitment from the city for next step, I will ask staff with regards to the 2020 Lower Johnston Report. For that to be brought back to council with comments and overview from staff on alignment with our current street design. Street standards. And then we'll connect back with you on that, obviously, and, and start working on hopefully a, a joint direction for some planning for that moving forward. But thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate your time tonight and, and attention to all of these issues.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. And I'm happy to come back once, to get further into the roundabout project if, if any questions come up.
Great. I'm sure there will be roundabout questions as that continues. So, thank you. Okay, thanks so much. We will move on to our next delegation for tonight. We have the Organizing Committee for FIFA here, the FIFA Advocacy Group. Come on forward.
Council and Madam Mayor, staffs and distinguished community members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present you again, maybe after 10 months. So like after our last council presentation, that was the, like the tangible progress we made. So far, because that was the beginning of whenever we, we have, like last 10 months ago, we, we came here. At that time, we were very initial stage, like we have been discussing with the, like the B C Soccer Association and other players. But now we have a solid base that is like, we have had like visit of the FIFA Canada. And after their visit, we, we like fine-tuned our, like narrowed down our operations. Like how far we can go up to that. So there is like the not team-based camp. It would be the pre-tournament climate agency and training base as an opportunity for Port Alberni. Because we could be the team-based camp properly if we had the, like the proper accommodations. Like the team-based hotels. Because it's a combination of team-based hospitality and team-based site. So we have the scopes of making the team-based site proper. But we do not have the, like the, we do not meet the criteria of the team-based hospitality. Best Western has the 84 rooms and, and Tainabara is 40 minutes away. So but for the team-based camp options, we have to have the 20 meters, 20 minutes radius distance. So that is the max. And the number of accommodation we need to have, so that is 130 accommodation. That we, Best Western do not have the qualified. But for the minimum, or like the size of the tournament, the 60, the size. Then we could qualify, but they cannot keep us in their pressure right now. So, so that was our official acknowledgement we received after, after our, like, virtual meeting with the FIFA Canada. On 30th July. So that was our official recognition. And from that point, we, we receive all the manuals and everything, like what we need to do. The compliance issues for the Bob Daley stadiums and, and, and the eco minor. So now we, we have been on the process of like. So the guideline is that we have to have the inspections, like the facility assessment done by Sports Lab. Or their FIFA accredited agencies. So we have the quotations from the Sports Lab. And so because they have the three, three like phases of the costing. And after the primary assessment, we will get a remedial action plan. And from that remedial action plan, we actually know that Bob Daley Stadium, how far we, we saw, we, we need to modify or upgrade. So far, we understand that we have the limitations of the drainage systems. Maybe because right, right now, everything is very scientific, like even ball bouncing calculations, everything is like so scientific. So we have to, whenever we'll have the, the primary assessment done. Then we, we'll come back to know that what sort of modification will be required. So, so that is the progress. And I, I know that because we had like the, you know, staff discussions after EVCM. That, thank you City of Port Alberni, that you have extended your best to discuss with the, even the sports ministers. And you extended all the best. So that is definitely the, like the, from the community as a community. So what support you have given to us, that is awesome. That we are like, we are indebted, definitely. And so from that, we, since they cannot, they are not able to finance anything. We have been actually looking for the corporate sponsors and, and the other opportunities. But we don't know that how much money need to be invested to upgrade. So whenever we had the discussion with the city staffs, just we, we take it like the rock bottom figure, something like that. Because we know the calculation of the land form. So their estimate was $1.2 million to upgrade. Like the, from the tar to like the grass-filled stadiums. So we could make a wild calculation that it could be 50%. Say for example, $600,000 and there is a contingent, $900,000, we can't to 15%. So that figure we, we also considered. We considered that because Sports Lab estimate, we know $30,000 roughly. And we have been thinking that the calculation that 30,000 maybe the, like the, whenever that we will hand over the assessment. To be done by the engineers, surveyors, they may take also maximum $30,000. So altogether, we, we are thinking that we, we could, we can raise up to $750,000. And so that we have been thinking to raise the fund. And we initially, we thought that whether the city can provide us the, some sort of staff time. But since right now, your team is fully occupied, then we try to reach out to SCRD. And since it was delaying for different reasons, we reached out to the First Nation bands. Because we are trying to make it either local government or the indigenous-led activities. And then we received the formal letter from UPA JASAT. So they would like, they also authorize us to act on their behalf. They are, like, they are happy to receive the funds, like whenever we write to them. But by this time, we actually wrote to tell us and, and O S Jet. And whenever we haven't engaged anybody, we, we just assume that because the fund will be placed to City of Port Alberni. And, and, and that then it will be spent accordingly, that whatever the budget should be there. So, so tell us, actually, we, we have, like, we haven't had the discussion with you. But practically, we thought that, okay, because since it's like the event, maybe at least event right, like naming right. We can discuss or negotiate whenever we get the terms, detailed terms from them. We asked them to $750,000 straightforward, the total, the cost of the projects. And for the O S Jet, we applied for 60 vouchers. Because if any team like would like to choose us, we may offer the, like the 60 vouchers to them. Because right now, this is the opportunity, it's a full global attention. So many sponsors can come forward to invest their money here. So, so these two already we applied. We are waiting for their, like the response. In the meantime, since right now, we just received the letter from UPA JASAT on 14th. On 13th, actually, we had a presentation with White Nations. So thank you, thanks Jeff Cook. He like arranged that discussions. We had a discussion with the Ken Wards, C-shirts. So like, we are trying to make a combine because this is an opportunity when we can raise. Maybe whatever right now we are expecting, maybe not 1 million. I was very ambitious that whether we could raise up to $1 billion. Because like, maybe we can make some infrastructure contribution. So that, because we, we, to make a legacy project, we had a discussion with the NIC. Like the school district to whether we can. we had a discussion with the N I C, like the school district, to whether we can make something, a special specialized sports institute in in the region. So for that, maybe that that we need a bigger fund, we had a discussion with the E V I C and also U N E S F. And actually, we have had like many progresses because we reached out to the C V S A for like the immigration, the customs, like if like the like the team come with their charter flight in that case, so that we can like make our arrangement in Done, like the immigration in the A V R A. And we have had our discussion with the Coulson as well, like because they have the support of handling 737 type like aircraft in the region. And we started discussion with the like the different diplomatic missions, so that we invited them before like, it's like maybe for the last six months, we are doing the same thing. So this is our short progress and right now, actually, whenever we we submitted to the business case to you, at that time, we did not have any, any like receiver, like who will lead, who will be our financial fundraising lead, because we are not a registered charity, we are a combination of like the different representation, even city, you have a representation, First Nation has the presentation, so but we need some solid, like incredible lead who can ask for funding. So right now, we have, yeah, because but prior to that, so that's why like whenever we wrote to you, we mentioned that endorsement of like fundraising efforts. But since right now, we have like, because you already provided us letter of support, that is good enough. So now we can, we can like, we are okay with that. So you're like, maybe a simple acknowledgement is good enough right now, but we will be happy if you make in the like the work in your next infrastructure inclusion, maybe because so there are a protocol, whether the fund will come from anybody or anybody can contribute, but it need to be spent through the city protocol. So that's why like, we we reach out to the staff team and and they also guided us, okay, because we have to submit a like approval from the city of Port Albany for the infrastructure con, the inclusion. And also like, we'll we'll be happy if you can make like the supervision part in kind contribution, like the whatever with the tender will be awarded and everything. So so that's what we have to request to you. Yeah, any questions?
Thank you very much. I'll go to councillor Hagard first.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think our staff at council is quite aware and very supportive. This project could be very exciting to have this come to Port Albany. I have met with government representatives at both the provincial and the federal level regarding this initiative. But we do have our new director, Parks Recreation and Culture. And before I make a decision to endorse this, I would like to have his input regarding if he feels this is a reasonable ask and if he feels that staff has the capacity to take this on. Because if you don't have the capacity, if he feels it's not, they're not going to be able to do it, then that would be the showstopper for me. Thank you.
I'll go to our C A O.
Thank you and thanks for that clarification. We did touch base quickly with the director on this. However, it comes down to the timelines. They're very tight and everything would have to be to go perfect to be ready in May. There's a lot of concern about entering into the rainy season and field construction. Our new director hasn't been here long enough to understand the full needs of the facilities or the field to make sure this could happen. So again, the city or administration concerns are, I would be very optimistic in saying that we could procure and have the funding for this for completion in May. Even the hiring of staff to look after the processes that need to be in place in the procurement and management of the of the project would be a lot. So for me, I think this is very ambitious. I do think that it, if everything went perfect and we had all the funding before December, then possibly, but we would have to move forward immediately on hiring a project manager and putting the processes in for collecting funds or or tax receipts, et cetera. And we are coming quickly up to mid-December. So if if council would like this to proceed, I do think that we would have to create a capital project and then we could look at all, if it would even be able to be possibly make it, make it before May. We did a upgrade to a ball field last year in the drainage and that wasn't complete until the summer because the machinery actually got bogged down in the type of clay on the field. I know that some of the councillors went out and took a look at that. It was a big topic of discussion at the time. And again, it's for working on fields in the rainy season is harder. We could create a shelter for the field, but that would just comes at added cost to try and make sure that it is to the proper standard at that time. So I don't know if the director, I could contact him after and see if we could bring a report back to council. I'm not sure we would have a report back before the break for Christmas. So that report would probably be in January and then we're even coming up tighter on the timelines. So every, every couple of weeks that go by brings more pressure to that May deadline for for the FIFA.
Yeah, I don't think I would need a formal report, just if you could just give verbal input to say, yes, we can do it, we can look at it, or no, it's not, we absolutely cannot. That's all I would want to hear from them.
Thank you. Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate it. Appreciate you taking on this, this great task and your positivity and trying to bring something to the community. I really appreciate that, Mr. Joe. I'm kind of on the same fence as it looks very ambitious in a timeline. And I was going to bring up that we have problems on those fields as is. It's a multi-use field, Echo Minor. And I guess that would be the other question too, is would those fields be shut down for its intended use throughout the summer if we were to do this? What is, and maybe, Mr. Joe, what is the timeline and where we will have athletes here using the field till when they're gone? What is, what does that look like?
So it's like, earliest like the end of May or beginning of June. So so they can, because the match will start from 13th of June in Vancouver, either they will leave before that or they will stay up to the group, be a first round. So
So so it really, the we will
Two weeks, two, three weeks.
So it's only a really a two week span, we're going to see international athletes here and then before they go to the FIFA World Cup. Okay. And I appreciate that. So because my, part of my, my concern is the usage of the field as is intended right now. Echo Minor is a big field, but it is used widely by minor softball, adult softball and all that. So I mean, Bob Daly Stadium, I can, I can see, I can see us doing Bob Daly Stadium. The, you know, soccer is one of the intended uses, but you know, other uses can be used on the same field. But for Echo Minor, I would have a real problem with holding up that field for two weeks and then not have like especially minor softball or the minor, minor kids not to be able to use the field. Or even soccer as well, too. I would imagine throughout the construction, minor soccer couldn't use it as well. So so I do appreciate it. I'm, I'm at a point here where I feel it like, like it said, Mr. Fox said, it's very ambitious to do. Have you thought about anything else, a secondary plan? And the reason why I say that is U V C M has talked about FIFA watch parties and that to bring people in, in which I know we could probably help out in some way. I know we have like Starlight movie nights up at, or what they used to call Starlight movie nights, up at Bob Daly Stadium with the big screens and that. But and again, not to take away from your positivity and all the work that you've done, but I don't want to do that here, I don't want to quash you. I just, at this point, for us to have a field, two fields ready up to what, and I apologize, I don't even know what FIFA accreditation is for those two fields, I don't even know what it would, what would take, but it just seems like it's very ambitious to get that done. And especially now, listening to Mr. Fox talking about getting the money in before the end of December and then we're going to have Christmas, everybody's going to be off and then it won't be till January till we start working on that. So we really have it between January and March to get a million dollars together, a project manager and get shovels in the dirt. So again, I'm, I'm not trying to take away from anything you've done or anything the group's done. You guys have been great and I really appreciate that. I just, I find it really tough at this point to see that happen in such a short amount of time. And that's, that's just my comment, but I'm, you know, again, if, if there is some celebration for FIFA that wants to bring all the nations of the world together in this community, which we're a very diverse community, I would love to see, you know, some of, some of my Brazilian cousins and my Croatian cousins and all that who are going to be down there supporting their team. What an amazing event that that is. So so there's definitely positives there and I appreciate your positivity and the ability to come forward and do all this work. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Actually, for financial figures, I'm a bit confident on that. So because like I'm saying confidence is because like, because of my experience and background, like how to play around the financial figures. So therefore, I'm a bit confident that like a mechanism can be worked out. But only thing is that the other logistics and I, whenever I have a discussion with the Mike Fox, like last time, actually, he asked the another question, that is a very straightforward. For example, we are putting an investment, is it for only for this time or we want to continue the FIFA accreditation part? So 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 that is an asset, like if you would like to maintain and if it is so, then whether city need to take an extra budget for annual budget in future. So I had given two things. One is like, it's a gateway to open an opportunity to have more international match. Because once we have this field ready and certified and we have had the team, that means like in the whole year, we'll have the opportunity, like the hockey right now. Because actually, I moved here because my wife started working in a hotel here. So we saw that during the like the hockey tournament time, she was telling that whole hotels is occupied, maybe other times like free. So so that means like every opportunity, whenever we'll have more matches and in in the soccer, like in a issue to hockey, that means like the all the hospitality industries will be get the opportunity of new business opportunity. The economy will be more better. So it's like, and how we'll maintain the expenses, so that is also simple, like whenever there will be international tournament, also tournament arranged by the Canada Soccer, national tournaments, that means that we'll have a revenue, city will get a revenue. So it's easy for, like also, we can make, so as we have been discussing about the naming right, like for example, naming right, we don't need to change the name of the Bob Daly Stadium. Maybe for the events, for example, Telus, okay, Telus Soccer, something like that. During the, up to September, maybe we have to make an like visibility of them, because they, they are investing money, so they aren't, they had, and we, they can continue for the future also. Because a future thing also, since we will have the opportunity for the soccer, so we can also sell the naming right for the soccer tournament, soccer majors, that can be a revenue opportunity for the city. In addition to like, so so there is also a commercial perspective.
Thank you.
But for the funding, fundraising, I'm a bit confident, so we can make it done.
Thank you. Do you have a, I see you have here fundraising November, December, and you've made requests already. Do you have a timeline on when you expect to hear back on those fundraising requests?
So they have like the, all the sponsors, usually their maximum time is two months time, usually two weeks to two months, but eight weeks max, max. And we like after, like if you, if you are in principally agree on that, that you are keeping these things in the infrastructure inclusion, then we'll start approaching, because right now, we have the right to on behalf of U P J S A too. So we'll start writing to the, all the corporate sponsor like the Scotiabank and and R V C because so they are, they have like different investment fund also, like I'm not talking about the 10,000 or 100,000 dollar, like they have like the bigger budget too. So we'll try to grab those opportunities and we'll try to make it brand like the indigenous brand.
Thank you. I think it is a fantastic idea. I would love to see it happen. I understand all of the benefits that come along with it, certainly this year and then into the future as well. But if I'm being realistic, I don't see any way that this gets done in the timeline that it needs to. So as much as I would love to see us put all of our effort behind trying to get it here, I just don't think that even if we do that, I think we're going to spend a lot of staff time that frankly, we don't have right now and energy trying to support. And I don't think we're going to be able to at this point with the time that would be needed for the infrastructure work. I, I just don't see how it could possibly be done. I think if we had confirmation of the funding today, it would still be a challenge to get the work done. And with no confirmation of funding at this point, I just don't think it's realistic. So from my perspective, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly happy to, you know, continue to endorse this as we have for a bit longer to see if there is, you know, a significant amount of funds that can be raised now. But I, I think that the, you know, we would need to have full confirmation of fundraising funds in place in like prior to Christmas and and I, you know, as we've heard from our, our C A O, even that would be a stretch to get the work done. So you know, my perspective is if there's already asks that have gone out, let's see how those go. Let's be optimistic and hopeful. And if something very significant does come back, then you know, maybe that is the point in which we can, we can kind of redeploy our, our resources and see if there is a chance to make this happen. But with the point that we're at right now, I don't see that we can pull resources to, without funding in place. So my preference would be, council, that we continue to hold our, our position of support for this and that we hopefully touch base with you as soon as you hear from the significant funding opportunities that you have put forward. If there is, I mean, we could have a special meeting of council to give whatever endorsement that is needed. If a significant, if a significant, you know, endorsement opportunity does come forward, then council pulls together to make sure we have a meeting to be able to offer whatever support is needed. But in lieu of that, I, I don't think we have enough information in front of us to be able to take any additional steps today. So does that leave?
Yeah, that, that is a great, I think, for right now, because we just need a confirmation that, yeah, we will start, because we start, we started approaching, but we'll start from tomorrow rapidly, because we need the confirmation before December too, as you mentioned. And then we can come back to you, because we have been like, whenever we have been discussing with the staff team, then also we are, we are planning for next council because but since it's a budgetary matter, also part of that, that's why today we schedule for that. But definitely, we would like to have like the next and it is a great opportunity that you, you accepted for like special meeting. So so for now, I think that that's great, like we are go ahead, because even the like the FIFA and B C Soccer also would like to know today's progress, also I'll update that it. So we, we, we continue this progress and also like we'll get back to city again with the funding availability and then part of the infrastructure inclusion part will go on. So that's what my understanding, that we can also collaborate with them.
I think from my perspective, if there is funding available, then council can make the designation very quickly on needed infrastructure steps. We, and then obviously, much planning and work would need to be done from there still. I just don't think that without funding in place, we can take any, any actions to potentially amend financial plans or anything else. Councillor Hagard, did you have your hand up?
I didn't have my hand up, but I would just say I think that's a good path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you very much for the work that your group is doing. If you can continue and hopefully come back to us with, you know, significant amount of funds fundraised and we have an opportunity to support that, then I think we'll largely be happy too. So I think just for today, we're kind of continuing and waiting to see how the efforts go.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, we will move on to unfinished business. Item number one, we have the 2026 to 2030 financial plan status.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we are going through the level of service with most of the departments within the city. Within each report, the level of service detail for that service is provided financially. These details will then be populated in the financial plan for second reading next week. These details will then be populated in the financial plan for second reading next week. Over the next couple of weeks here, we do have a few opportunities for the public to engage with the city. First opportunity will be our November 24th Public Open House. At that point, we'll be having each department there to engage with the public at Echo Center. Also, the following week, December 2nd, is the council requested meeting with the public if they would like to engage in regards to the financial plan. So that will be specifically with details on the financial plan. And then moving forward, looking at the tax rate by law, we do have a tax increase for 2020, 2026 at 6.91%. We do have the opportunity to look at how we allocate our community gaming funds, and that's one item that staff will be seeking a request from council. We have made some changes to our community investment program, and with that, there has been some reallocation of of funding that needs to happen. So if council could have a look at allocation within that, we can maybe make a suggestion that our community investment program is covered fully with the community gaming funds, but currently, right now, it's covering the McLean's Mail operation, it's covering the Economic Development Service in the city and Community Investment Program. So with that, a lot of the discussion tonight will focus on level of service. If there's any further questions or requests for information, the committee can direct staff to come back with that information. So with that, I turn it back to the committee for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions to get started? Okay, thank you very much, Andrew, for the update. Would somebody like to move her seat? Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Haggard, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carry, none opposed. And now we'll move on to the staff reports and service level reports that were mentioned by our Director of Finance. We will start with community safety and social development.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I'm pleased to provide the Community Safety and Social Development Service Level Report focusing focusing on our key accomplishments, priorities for 2026, and budget highlights. The first area will be the bylaw services. Some of our key accomplishments this year were we managed 690 complaints. We there were 418 fines issued in the amount of 58,000. We still have 44,000 outstanding. Increase in dog licenses with 595 this year, and the permanent dog tag process is working extremely well. So we had started that last year or the beginning of this year. That has brought in about 19,000 in revenue. Very successful partnerships for managing encampments. In fact, small segue to what happened today. We had a an encampment that was has had received several complaints from the public and it's on private property in one of the local malls. We were able to work with the property owner and and also to work with the outreach teams and the residents that are the people that have taken up residence. That doesn't come without working those partnerships continually. That's been a huge success with our department. We had our annual trailer and RV vehicle. I would say enforcement in October. There were I'm proud to say that there were 77 residents that received warnings, and we only had to issue 10 fines, which that is a really high successful rate. Three trailers remain on the streets and of course, will be subject to further enforcement. Some of the challenges, of course, that all of that work doesn't come without challenges. And one of the challenges, the perception on enforcement and the challenges that's associated with that. And that's a continual thing that we try to work on with our education. Our fine adjudication and collection process is ramping up. And so that's something that we'll be focusing on more for next year. Our priorities, of course, are to update the bylaws and manage the derelict and nuisance properties. At this time, I'll stop on bylaw. If you have any questions about bylaw specific.
Counselor Haggard.
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. I just want to say that how much I appreciate that you bring a lot of empathy and respect when you're talking about dealing with people, their encampments. And these people deserve empathy and respect. So thank you so much for bringing that to the department.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to echo Counselor Haggard's point, especially for today. It's very tough when you have a private property and you're trying to deal with it, but you have to deal with it with class and empathy, like you said, Counselor Haggard. So I really appreciate you doing that the right way and ensuring that these people don't just get kicked out, they're taken care of, and you're taking care of the complaint originally. So really appreciate the work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. Oh, sorry, Counselor Solda. And Counselor Solda, if you can use the raise hand feature, then it will keep your hand up and I'll I'll see you. Thanks. Go ahead, Counselor.
I'm sorry, I don't have it on on because I'm not on Teams, so I don't have it. So I kind of have to wave to you till we fix the problem at city with me being there. So anyways, just a quick question. I echo everything everybody has complimented you on and everything, the bylaw and but I have a question regarding encampments. If anybody sees an encampment or, you know, they walk by one, who do they call the office and let you know there's an encampment? How is the process so the public knows and understands? Thank you.
Thank you for the question and through the chair. Yes, the short answer is through the bylaw office, and we encourage people to report encampments that they see. And then there's a discernment process as to discern whether they're on private property, public property, where if within the city limits, within the A C R D, etc. Once we figure all that out, then we look at all the variables. And and so we receive complaints on a very regular basis. I would say almost not quite daily, but very regular basis, even into the rainy season.
Great. Counselor Petola.
Nothing here. I'd certainly echo Counselor Haggard and Counselor Mealy, but I have no no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw your raise hand thing up, but maybe you were just displaying it for Counselor Solda. Thank you. We can move on to the next part. Thanks very much.
So I'll move on now to the community policing program. And some of our metrics that we are reporting on the community policing program, we have a cadre of 20 volunteers. We've the volunteers have put in over 2,000 hours of volunteer hours throughout the year. Some of those hours have been in patrol hours, doing crime watch, about 1,600 hours there. There were 97,000 drivers tracked and reported to the R C M P, the numbers, and to I C B C. The warning letters that were sent by the R C M P for Q1 to Q3 were 106 for speeding. And those warning letters come from the R C M P and 14 for distracted driving, could be a cell phone, pet, food, variety of different things. Our council priorities for 2026 are to continue with the community policing activities, adding new activities as appropriate and as resources allow. And of course, researching and continuing with additional community safety programs. And that I'll stop and pause if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, we can continue on.
The third area in our department is the social development. Some of our key metrics and accomplishments for 2025 were to continue with the continuum of care meetings, working on the gaps in services and based on the social determinants of health. And that helps us to focus our discussions, our advocacy, our our work as a as a continuum of care coalition. The outreach worker inventory was finalized and circulated, and that also helps to inform projects going forward. For example, the neighborhood mitigation strategy and identifying the gaps in services. We held 38 situation table meetings, so those are held on a weekly basis with 10 referrals and four individuals accepting those officer's service. We did do a trial pilot for crisis response team and it and that was a small project that we did between the B C E H S and paramedics, community paramedic, and the island health, mental health, and substance use. It's kind of paused at the moment just because of external resources. The priorities in social development are, of course, to continue to respond to priorities identified by council, senior management, and the discussions of the continuum of care coalition, informed by what we're seeing and hearing at the situation table. To coordinate a community safety and well-being leadership team if we're successful with the U B C M grant that we applied for, which we should be hearing about fairly soon, I would anticipate, in December to hear about that. And initiate the neighborhood mitigation strategy. And of course, we have applied for that Health Canada Grant to fund that. We won't know about that though until the spring because the the funding would only be approved in the spring. So I'll pause for comments and questions, and then I'll move on to the budget area.
Not seeing any questions. You can continue on.
Thank you. So with our bylaw services, our the revenue that we bring in are for fines and parking tickets. Our expenditures for 2025 are on par. Mostly, the largest component in our budget is our wages and benefits. In 2026, our budget has received the standard budget increase of 535, 623. We did identify that in contract services, we have moved a little bit of line items around to allow for towing and disposal of derelict vehicles, trailers and RVs, because that has increased over the last year, last couple of years. Moving along to our bylaw vehicles, it's a slight increase for 2026, and those are for the bylaw officers to have the two vehicles. Public safety building, our expenditures are actually a little bit lower for contracting services and supplies for 2026. So they were 49,000 for 2025 and have been slightly decreased to 41,000. Our animal control services, our revenue for 2025 for dog licenses were about $14,000, and we predict 17.5 for 2026. And our expenditures in the animal control services were still in negotiation with the S P C A to have clear reporting metrics and a reduced budget. So that has yet to be finalized, and those discussions are still ongoing. Community policing expenditures, there's a slight decrease in salaries and you'll see an increase in the supplies. Those are for activities in community safety. With that, I'll pause and stop and entertain any questions.
No questions. You can continue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's not seeing anyone else. Lovely. We will move on to human resources, which I think is you today, Mike.
That's correct. Yeah, Krista and Dave are off on some well-earned vacation. So I'm going to be going through the level of service report fairly quickly. Really, in human resources, the area hasn't seen any increase in service or decrease in service, and we're trying to maintain a status quo. So it's mostly unchanged. You will see in the budget lines that there has been a slight reallocation of funding, and this has to do with the movement out front at the city hall and allocating more time towards H R of one of the employees. So you will see that adjusted in the budget and then also adjusted in corporates' budget. In 2025, H R has seen successes, including the completion of collecting bargaining with Q P and filling lots of key roles in the city. You'll see that we have a much fuller team right now. We are still working on filling a few more positions and recruitment and retention continues to be a focus of the department. Additionally, injury management program was implemented, and I just want to highlight that because by doing this, not that only doesn't increase our staff, being back to work quicker and enjoying work and the return to work process more. In the long term, working with our WorkSafe budget, it does they go after after off of a three-year collective on our rate. So by implementing this now, we will see a difference in in three years, hopefully, if we can continue to see the successes. In terms of challenges and opportunities, day-to-day in H R continue to be maintained. However, our long-range programs, we're still lacking to get to policies and procedures and et cetera. The activities of day-to-day, just with health and safety and the H R recruitment and retention continues to be the focus. We are updating the current job evaluation program, and that will start in 2026. And that comes out of bargaining, where we are trying to update to have a more effective job evaluation process, and it's going to take a lot of staff time and union time to complete that. And then in 2026, the priorities are collective bargaining with P A, P F F A, which is the fire department, and it's expiring in December 2024. So we are making sure that we highlight that is going to be moving forward soon. We also continue to work on trying to get to our H R policies and up to date with best best practices. So hopefully, you'll see a lot coming in 2026. And continue to work to make sure that we continue to fill staff vacancies, that we fill them in a timely manner to make sure that we can continue the service levels of the city. Moving on to police services, this is the second part of the H R function besides safety and humans and resources, is the police services over at R C M P. This does not include the R C M P contract though, but is the municipal side of the R C M P. In this area, again, it's the budget is largely unchanged, just cost of living increases, et cetera. And in 2025, the police support services was successful in continuing to provide specialized support services to the R C M P within the approved budget. Additional building modifications for implementation of body-worn cameras also were complete, on time and under budget. Challenges and opportunities in 2026 include the deployment of the body-worn cameras, expected in early 2026, and that will bring changes in processes to staff. There's also a security risk assessment for the R C M P detachment was complete, and administration will be reviewing that and then bringing that to council for consideration. And with that, I will take any questions any council may have.
Thank you. Before I go to council questions, there's a few reductions in police service
Before I go to council questions, there's a few reductions in police service revenues. It looks like about $100,000 less in 2026 for revenues than 2025. Don't need this answer tonight if you want to wait for HR, but building rental is the one that kind of stands out to me as, why would the reduction, why would we have a reduction in building revenue, which I believe just comes straight from the province and federal government, from $134,000 to, or sorry, $164,000 down to $130,000? And then a bit of a reduction anticipated as well in traffic fines and, yeah. Yeah, so a couple changes there, if we could get a little bit more information on why we're anticipating those. And then I'm also curious just to know those revenues, how close do they actually come into what we budget versus what we, you know, what we actually receive? And I know that that's separate from the RCMP contract, which, which often does have a return at the end of the year as well, but if we could get that information, I think it would be helpful. Questions from council? Okay, not seeing any questions from council, let's continue on to economic development.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. The, I guess I will start with what I consider to be some of the major accomplishments of this calendar year, which are that we had a movie filmed here, we received a grant of $500,000, which will lay the foundation for economic development work for 2026 and beyond. We had another grant for $148,000, which is providing improvements to Victoria Key, and there's a beautiful building taking shape there. Three of our vacant industrial properties were bought by new owners, and everything that we hear from each of them suggests that we're going to see both employment and tax revenue from those. And our community economic development initiative at Cludacy Haven Marina, the small market is nearing completion there. In addition, I think that one of the achievements of 2025 has been the Alberni Valley Forestry Coalition. That work has been undertaken by Chief Counselor Ken Watts of the Saschaat First Nation. He's done a remarkable job, and we have the MLA and the MP for the area worked with Brody Guy from Ice-T to establish Ship Recycling Leadership Group, which is in the very early stages of its work. And then the work that's proposed for 2026, I brought a report to council a couple of meetings ago, where I laid out the initiatives that we would be focused on for our next calendar year, but I want to touch bases on... All right, come in stereo. I am working on a report on a non-tax revenue sources for council. That's part of a series of report on resilience, economic resilience. And we, of course, are also going to be putting some effort into Hometown Takeover Canada with the intent of landing them here in their community. I think I've noted before that competition is fierce because it's open to communities under 20,000, and there are 4,000 of them in Canada. However, I continue to believe that we've got the right stuff. And then, moving on to the proposed budget for 2026, there's small increases in several line items, and I'm completely confident that we will deliver on those. I'm very excited about the fact that we are very close to issuing the request for proposal for a marketing plan and branding, rather, for the community. We're also very close to issuing a request for expressions of interest around creative arts and circular economy initiative, and as soon as those are done, we will then move on to the RFP for the Economic Development Master Plan. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I will just start by saying I felt like I stepped back in time when you sent the email for the branding committee, so really happy to see after all these, all the years, that work continuing and glad we were able to get funding for it. So thanks for keeping that initiative alive. I'll go to Council Haggard.
Not a question, but I'll just make a comment, Pat. Every time I go to an event, I meet at least one person that says, "I've just moved to Port Alberni," and they tell me how much they love this community, and a large part of it is probably due to the hard work that you do, so thank you.
Thank you for that, I much appreciate it. And we have estimates that there are one new family a day moving into the community, and that comes from our subscription to Neighborhood Welcome. And Megan, the owner of the business that does that work, tells me that she believes that that number is underestimated because they don't get to all of the new residents that are moving into the community. They do provide us with a report monthly about the communities that the people are moving from, and anecdotally, we keep hearing the same thing over and over again. The properties are affordable, we're centrally located on Vancouver Island, and the ease of access to outdoors are the primary reasons that they're relocating. And one of the things that I absolutely delight in hearing is that many of these individuals we are encountering, and they are telling us exactly that. We are absolutely thrilled we've moved here. We've been surprised because often when they let friends and family know that they're moving to Port Alberni, as the mayor has mentioned previously, our reputation is still lingering from days when unemployment was high and there were challenges with the economy and the environment. Those have changed, and it seems that some members of the public are slow to catch up on that, but we are absolutely turning, turning heads and making progress.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks for the report, Pat. We will move on to Parks, Recreation, and Culture.
Thank you, everyone. This is my first report, so please go easy a little bit. Good evening, Chair and Committee. I have the pleasure of kickstarting the Parks, Recreation, and Culture service level reports tonight with the administration and programming. So two of the council expectations that I would like to note here that we have been actively working on is number three, the participants and guests see the value in the program they're registered for or are participating in, and number four, adequate staffing levels are consistently achieved. So as noted in our successes, number one down there is since March of 2025, we have successfully been running seven days a week with our Aquatic Center operations, obviously not during the summertime or during shutdown, but throughout the rest of the time, we are kind of meeting that operational consistency of being open seven days a week, and it is full, the pool is consistently full. However, one of the challenges is, is that the high staff turnover has presented some challenges in maintaining consistent staffing levels. As everyone knows, we are always hiring for lifeguards, but we have noticed that with the increase in our two full-time team leads, our program delivery quality has increased immensely, especially for swimming lessons. So although a challenge, we've still seen successes out of it. The other challenge we've seen this year has been the limited provincial and federal funding support, which is noted in the finances further down, specifically with the BCRPA Family Day Grant, which this year they didn't actually offer, so we weren't able to achieve that funding. Secondary is the Canada Summer Jobs Grant, and although we try every year, some years we are unsuccessful with the amount that we're hoping to receive, so this was one of the years where we were unsuccessful in the amount that we had asked for, and moving forward, that is why there is a reduction in the finances further down, just to, we can always hope for the stars, but we don't always hit those. Moving forward to kind of our council priority status, and so with the two listed in 2025, they are both ongoing. We are implementing our participant feedback surveys, not just for, you know, one program specifically, but to encapsulate all of our children programming, aquatics, general recreation, and as well as at the arena, and then as well as adult programming too, and being, finding ways to separate the two categories so we understand where our successes are and then where there's some gaps in trends or programming are, as well as, you know, making sure that we're reducing the turnover of staff but still kind of hitting that high-quality service. And yeah, even like you said, the quality of support through our supervisors at the Aquatic Center has been a huge help in that. For 2026 council priorities, we'll continue with the 2025 ones, as well as the fees and charges implementation, so that is always ongoing with it updating every single calendar year, as well as implementing that program and service participation survey. And so our communication format will be, once we have those surveys up and running, to be able to provide reports to council, as well as engagement through our registration software, making sure we're reaching out to all of our participants who are actively coming to our facilities, getting as much information from them as we can to make sure we're still offering quality services to our community. Yeah, I welcome, welcome any questions, please go easy.
Excellent report, thank you very much. Are there questions or comments from council?
I was just going to say, for your first time, you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We will move on to culture.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Committee. I would say the year has been characterized by a lot of change in culture. Our successes, as listed, I've talked to you before about what we were doing out at McLean Mill, and that is going rather well, and also the reinterpretation signage project is also now into the work plan of the curator at the museum, and that is proceeding. This year, we did realize a reduction in museum operating hours, and I'm happy to say that we had minimal impact. Our numbers are tracking higher this year at this point than they did last year, so we did not really see a reduction of attendance or interest, given the fact that we retrenched some of the hours, so that's actually really good. And on that note, just mark your calendars, Thursday, we have the Night Market and our new exhibition, Christmas Stories, opening this Thursday night, so if you're looking for something to do, come check it up, check it out, and revisit Christmases of years past. One of the, I think, the biggest changes is our, how we're increasing how we collaborate with our community. And while we ourselves, within the Department of Culture, are facing challenges and changes, I would say too, our community is, and our organization and our community are. And while that is, there are challenges, there's also opportunities in there. And so it's good to see our community, our cultural organizations coming together to figure out how we can mutually support each other, how we can align events so that we can continue and sustain things that are very important to the people at Port Alberni. And on November 28th, a great example of that is Light Up and Sail Past are together at last, and it promises to be a really special evening, and I hope everybody attends. So going forward, some of the additional priorities that have been added to culture is with the Community Investment Program and the Heart Program, the review coming to myself to put together, you know, an idea, ideas and recommendations for streamlining of processes, and trying to identify ways to maximize efficiency and pave a way for sustainability. Those will continue to be a priority going into 2026. I'm also really happy to say with the new director arriving, our attention will also go to some of the things that are within side the museum, like our collections policy. We have done some work this year where we did in a deaccession. I would like to see how we can take our collections and strengthen and narrow their focus further in 2026. And then also, I look forward to spending some time on putting some framework around our public art policy and how we can move forward with that with some key objectives, and also coming back with a refresh on that policy. So I entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, excellent report. I have a couple of questions, I'll go to council first. Any questions from members of council? I'll go. All right. I just want to start by saying I think the changes that have happened at the mill have been fantastic. You know, it's notably, noticeably cleaner, tidier. I think that the, what is out there is more impactful as, you know, pieces of, of our community and heritage than it has been in prior years, so it, I think the site is looking fantastic, and I feel generally like we are getting good value for our community out of it, and it's just, I know that's, you know, across a couple of departments, that cleanup effort, but really wanted to recognize that. I think that all who are working on it have done a fantastic job there. One question I noticed here is the Industrial Heritage Centre and Curling Rink, property insurance, $19,000. I wasn't aware that, or I guess we're covering insurance because we're the building owner, I thought that that was one of the items covered through our lease, or is it just utilities that are covered by the lease?
I might try and answer that, or here's Andrew, he'll have an even better answer, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the question. So last year, what we did, we did bring forward a report to council that included the details on each building that we own. So we own the building, we insure the building, that includes both the Curling Rink and the IHC in the old, old arena in Curling Rink, that is the cost of the insurance for that building.
Thank you. Moving on to McLean Mill, I'm assuming this is just sort of a reallocation, but could you speak to the you speak to the change in wages and benefits from $17,000 to $61,000?
Thank you. Yes, that is a reallocation. Part of that will be my salary for the work that I do over there, but also for at least the next year, I anticipate at least 25% of the curator's time will be spent on that reinterpretation project. So that has been reallocated to the McLean Mill, and that will, her salary will taper back once we're through that project.
Excellent, thank you. And my last question is just on the Roundhouse and APR operations. What are we contributing to IRF for, for those facilities? It's a small amount, so if we don't have the exact amount today, or information today, that's fine, but I was just surprised to see an IRF contribution for those facilities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when we did the rail upgrades on Athol, we ended up making the recommendation to council that if we are making an improvement, we will be making an asset management contribution to replace that in the future.
Great, thank you. That makes sense. I think that's all of my questions. Assuming that the special events wages increases a similar situation, or, yeah, okay, perfect, just allocation. Wonderful. Okay, I think that's all I have. Thank you very much for the thorough report. We will move on, I assume, to facilities.
Good evening, Chair and Committee. The Level of Service Report for Facilities' operation gives an overview of how we manage and maintain city-owned buildings and leased spaces. This includes recreation centers, administrative offices, cultural and historic sites, and seasonal vendor units. Our role is to keep these facilities safe, functional and accessible, so they can support municipal services and community programs. That means we handle preventative and corrective maintenance, manage utilities and energy efficiency, plan and deliver capital projects, administer leases, and ensure compliance with safety and regulatory standards. Everything we do is aligned with council's expectations, that include keeping facilities open and reliable, maintaining safety and accessibility, monitoring utility and consumption, prioritizing capital upgrades based on safety and asset condition, and supporting community needs, including emergency response when required. A few key takeaways I'd like to bring up are, we've made great progress on energy efficiency, we secured a $500,000 Fordus B.C. incentive for the multiplex dehumidifier replacement and heat recovery integration, which supports greenhouse gas reduction goals. We're also seeking additional funding through the Green Municipal Fund Program. We've completed facility condition assessments for 17 buildings. These assessments identified over $11 million in capital renewal needs, and they're now guiding the draft Parks, Recreation and Culture Master Plan and long-term financial planning. We've shifted to a needs-based budgeting model. This change improves transparency and fiscal discipline by eliminating contingency-heavy allocations and requiring council reports for non-essential upgrades. We delivered major capital projects on time and on budget for projects like the rink boards at the multiplex, roof replacements at the public work yard, park yard, boiler system upgrades, RCMP improvements, and a few others. Finally, we will face challenges ahead. Aging infrastructure, deferred projects, staffing constraints, and uncertainty around large legacy facilities like the Aquatic Center, Industrial Heritage Center, and McLean Mill mean we'll need strategic decisions and public engagement moving forward. In summary, facility operations plays a critical role in maintaining service levels while advancing council's goals for sustainability and fiscal responsibility. Operational savings of over $267,000 identified for 2026 will help reinvest in priority projects without compromising service. Next steps will include continuing phased capital renewals, pursuing grants, expanding energy efficiency initiatives. And that concludes my summary, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you very much for the report. Are there questions from members of council? Councilor Mealy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cranaville. Appreciate the report. Thank you very much. I just want to just reiterate thanks again for on time, on budget, or under budget, which is something that is not talked a lot in any government, federal, municipal, or provincial. So appreciate the efforts there to have those savings, but to still have the services delivered to the community, so really appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Councilor Hager, did you have a comment?
I did not.
Okay, okay. Not seeing any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, through the chair, I just wanted to just interrupt on the facilities part. Why the Industrial Heritage Center, Curling Rink is slated in for demolition, and the thought from administration behind that, I just know that there was a public member inquiring on that, and I just wanted to make sure that we covered that. Again, with out having the allocation to do the repairs, and no plan yet received from council, administration is just doing our due diligence. At any time that council receives a plan, that could be removed from the five-year capital plan at that time. So I know that the Industrial Heritage Society has been working diligently on it, so we would revise the cost if council accepted the plan brought forward from the Industrial Heritage Society, and then we would see if the Curling Club or the Sunshine Club have similar plans in place, and then bring that back for a change to the allocation in 2030.
Thank you. And it is in the new business item as well, noted in that report, so I was waiting for that, if there's any follow-up questions, but that's okay. Are there any questions on that at this time? And just to be clear, there's no updates to that building scheduled in 2026?
Through the chair, that's correct. The city hasn't. The IHS has done some work on the building itself.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to parks.
Good evening. Through the chair, I'm here to present the Parks Level of Service for 2025. Overview for our parks services are, parks maintain outdoor spaces, sports fields, playgrounds, trails, boulevardage, and natural green spaces throughout the city. The goal is to ensure these spaces are safe, functional, attractive, and ready for the community to use all year round. Parks plays a key role in supporting recreation, environmental stewardship, as well as vibrant community. Expectations for parks, parks to be maintained at a first-class appearance, which includes weekly, daily inspections, as well as maintenance cycles, high levels of vegetation cared, manicured turf, healthy trees, maintaining shrubs and garden beds. Infrastructure inspections frequently for safety and functionality. Litter-free space areas that are welcoming and well-kept. Successes over the last year completed were a major renovation in key sports fields, advanced preventative maintenance programs in all of our sports fields, transitioning all of our flower beds from perennials to reduce annual costs and improving appearance. We completed the sports field assessment in 2025, and secured and completed the B.C. Hydro ground for trees. Supported development work at Esso Beach waterfront to further tree planting at Harbor Key as well. We have improved level of service by streamlining interior processes, as well as reviewing preventative maintenance efficiencies without increasing our budget. Challenges are staffing levels limit the pace at which we can maintain parks and advance our projects, and much of our infrastructure is aging and requires more preventative maintenance. There's ongoing need for balancing high-service expectations and require efficiencies and smarter use of our resources. Aligning with council's strategic goals and priorities for 2025, safe walkable green spaces, ongoing maintenance on our trails and pathways, assessing minor improvement in neighborhood parks such as 10th Avenue, 16th Avenue Park, as well as River Road. Reviewing our waterfront areas, this was supported with the work done at Esso Beach, as well as looking at a brighter waterfront corridor. Quality of service maintains a level of service in attractive parks and remains our core service. Multi-use pathways, ensured pathway networks are maintained, accessible, and safe for all cyclists, as well as pedestrians. Parks budget for 2026 to 2030, the plan is to maintain a stable budget and target reallocation to support long-term needs. Key adjustments include reallocation of maintenance supplies to support a new FTE for year-round maintenance, consolidate projects such as Harbor Key post replacement, and move this funding to support our bridge walkways, reduce the current allocation of some sports field top dressing funds to relocate this towards some of our infrastructure for score clocks over the next five years, shifting our garbage replacement funding to improve our bridge and overall boulevard maintenance repairs. And in 2028, removing the Quonset Capital Repairment Project, this was able to be removed due to efficiencies and reallocation of resources down at the park yard. Closing summary, the amazing Parks team still continues to deliver high-quality service with limited staff. Looking ahead to improve all of our help into main strong levels of service for the community. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say that I think the Esso Beach is looking fantastic, the little green space there. I was walking down there recently and was just really impressed by, you know, what that used to be versus what it is today. Not a big project, but certainly a meaningful improvement to one of our waterfront spaces. So thanks for the work that's gone on there and many other places. Questions or comments? Councilor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for the report, really appreciate it. It's the time-honored tradition in Port Alberni that the Parks and Recreation Department does more with less, so I really appreciate you doing a lot with the staff that you have. I wanted to echo as well, Madam Mayor's comments about Esso Beach, it looks, it does look fantastic down there, and it's just another piece of the puzzle when it comes to accessing our waterfront. Also, Jude, just finding spots in the budget to take money out that we don't see and putting it towards, you know, even small things. So like I say, seven, reduction of $17,000 from top dressing sand to fund sport field score clock replacements over five years, which is, it doesn't seem like a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but it is one of those things that is very well-needed for our sports community in this, in this city. So appreciate you finding little chunks of money where we're not going to use it and putting it to somewhere where a lot of people are going to see the benefit. So appreciate the work. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for the report. Before we go to Development Services, I missed asking a question earlier, and I'm not actually sure of Facilities, whose department this is, but I noticed going through the operational budgets that Stepping Stones II has no lease payment, but is noted, obviously, as one of our buildings, and does have an insurance cost, you know, reasonably low, $5,000. I'm sure we've seen that before. However, what struck me this time is that, of course, right above that, the page before is the $55,000 a year lease revenue that we are getting from the other daycare. I'm wondering, I guess, how long have we had a lease with Stepping Stones II? Is it, I don't remember ever reviewing that lease personally, but certainly it could have happened, and I'm just wondering if we're in a dollar-a-year lease or a zero-dollar-a-year lease in perpetuity, and if that isn't creating potentially inequity amongst the daycare service providers in the community? If we have two daycare buildings that we own, one we are, now, they are vastly different. One, we are charging $55,000 a year for, and the other is getting a zero-dollar lease from the city. So we don't necessarily have to have that information today, but just wondering if it's something we can look into to make sure that we are in an equitable lease with both providers.
Through the chair, I can provide a little bit of information on that. As our leases come due, then we look at them and follow council's direction for fair market value. My guess is, is that the lease hasn't come due yet, and we're still under an old lease at a dollar a year, but we will review that and we'll make sure it's in the Q and A.
Thank you. Certainly not suggesting we charge any crazy amount, but I'm just wondering, more than anything, just because we do have two buildings now, wanting to make sure that we have fairness. So we'll move on to infrastructure services. I've already put a checkmark next to Development Services for some reason, so we're skipping you tonight, Scott. Just kidding. Go ahead.
That's okay. So no service levels changes for Development Services, so I'll provide a high-level overview for council and members of the public. The department plays a key role in managing our zoning subdivision and other development-related applications and projects to ensure, you know, effective land use for our community. In addition, the department administers, you know, our business licensing, building permits and inspections to ensure new construction meets code requirements. And the department provides a substantial amount of information, both within the department, to other departments, but also to the general public, to development industry, real estate contractors, and other registered professionals. Just a few things for 2025. The city did receive some grant funding for development approval streamlining review, and we've begun that project, and that will continue into 2026. The complete communities and the interim housing needs projects were completed, and both those documents and the data and the information that we gained from that is being used every day by our department, as well as will help inform the official community plan. Some challenges we had this year, as council may be aware, we had a number of vacant positions throughout the year, and we are looking to replace our planning technician who recently retired, so that is a current vacancy in the department that we're hoping to fill in the near future. Going forward in 2026, certainly need to work on the official community plan to move that project forward. The department has really needed to focus over the last several months on several development applications and move those forward in the process, but we'll need to get back to the official community plan. Of course, after the OCP, look to look for some substantial revisions to the zoning bylaw to follow up on the implement, the new official community plan. As council had previously directed in a report from staff, we will do some minor changes to the zoning bylaw and business licensing bylaw for the short-term rental process that we had reported to council earlier in the fall. We'll begin work with other departments on the development costs, a new development cost charge bylaw, and amenity cost charge bylaw. As I indicated before, we'll complete the development approval streamlining project, and of course, continue with our development applications, business licensing, and building permit process. Just on the budget, I would note, there is a, an increase in the budget and wage item, and that is not any new staff. That in 2025, to ensure that we kept our budget as low as possible, and we knew we had vacancies and we would have, it would take time to fill those, so we didn't fully budget for the department in 2025. We are hoping that 2026, we will have the department fully staffed, so that's the difference, primarily the difference there, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. We also hope your department is fully staffed this year, so fingers crossed on that. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for the report. We will now move on to Infrastructure Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, committee members. I panicked in the other room as I thought I was supposed to be here for the last one, so I'm glad I wasn't late. I'm here tonight to present the service level reports for the Infrastructure Services Department, and under this umbrella comprises both the Engineering Department, as well as the Public Works Department. Much like other departments, the theme of our service level reports is maintaining status quo, both in terms of our service level and no budgetary increases. I'd first like to run through the Engineering Department. So from a high level, our, the purpose of our department, we're the gatekeepers for standards and ensuring that our infrastructure is designed, built, and maintained to accept and ensuring that our infrastructure is, is designed, built, and maintained to acceptable industry standards. Couple of the council expectations that I'd like to highlight from our report is just, number three, maintaining the public safety standards through inspections and planned timely maintenance of our existing infrastructure, excuse me. We're working very hard at meeting a lot of our regulatory requirements with some of our big infrastructure, such as our dams, dikes, wastewater treatment plant, et cetera. We also are responsible for planning and executing all infrastructure projects, such as roads, bridges, utilities, while maintaining budgets and timelines. Some of the successes from the Engineering Department in the past year or so has been the initiation of all of our master plans across all departments across the city. We've had a couple major capital projects, including the Bird Street redevelopment, the Soma Site demolition remediation key-to-key pathway, as well as a number of pedestrian intersection safety upgrades, which were primarily conducted through Public Works, but supported from the Engineering Department. Some of the upcoming priorities in 2026 for the Engineering Department are the, there's three major capital projects, the Argyle First to Third redevelopment, as well as our two utility projects, the Josephine Force Main Franklin River Road Water Main Replacement, as well as trying to get all of our master plans completed by hopefully the end of 2026, with one or two squeaking into 2027. Challenges similar across the board for both Engineering, Public Works, aging infrastructure, staff capacity, and specific to the Engineering Department, looking at optimizing our processes for both internal and external stakeholders with development approvals and contractors alike. Nothing substantial to highlight under the budget section for the Engineering Department. I can pause here before moving on to Public Works, or just keep right on going if.
Not seeing any, oh, did you have a question, Counsel Haggard? Go ahead.
This is a very general question, but as Jim just mentioned, I'm seeing a very common thing here tonight is aging infrastructure. And previous councils always focused on keeping taxes low and not thinking, you know, 10 to 20 years ahead about all of our infrastructure is going to have to be replaced. I remember when I first got elected to council, that quite surprised me. That was one of the things that, how did that happen? And I know we're trying to start put money reserves, but is there, when these master plans come out, will there be a plan in place and how much money we're going to have to start putting away when those master plans are completed?
I can start that through the chair, and then if the Director of Engineering and Infrastructure Services wants to continue, he can. Really, we do expect a difference. It's how much of a difference and what is that gap? A lot of municipalities have where they are now and how they get to where they need to be, and that is done over time. We've been making some strides over the last three years of putting money and reinvesting in our asset management program, which will help us curve that line. However, there will be some sort of reality checks, I guess, once we start getting all the master plans coming in and understand our pavement management study, the age of our water and sewer infrastructure, and all of our facilities. So I know last year our facilities came, and it was a shock to a lot of people about a lot of roofs are needed. Everything is sort of hitting that timeline. So I believe as the master plans will, it'll fully complete the five- and 10-year capital plan. However, I believe that we have made very good strides in the last few years and continue to do so with the financial plan as presented currently.
Thank you. And just a general comment for when we do this in the future. I think the, like, the budgets are fantastic how they're presented in this report. It would be nice for the collective of each department to have like an overall where they're at, because, you know, for instance, Engineering Administration, their overall budget is slightly down, the next one slightly down. But there's like five segments of this one department ultimately, and there's not kind of a summarized chart of like, is the overall department up or down, without having to go through like 10 to 15 pages to add them up on our own and figure out where it lands as a whole. So just a note for next time, I think a summary for each, like, general section would be super helpful, especially the ones in Parks and Rec where there's tons of different budgets for different facilities and things like that. But continue not to do with your department. Go ahead, Counsel Mealy.
I apologize. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. Just, just really quickly, thank you, Mr. McDonald. The Josephine Force Main Replacement Project, so the RFP is out, should end at the end of the month. It says construction commence Q2 2026, so that's April, May, June. Are we expecting to have, how to put this, additional constraints on River Road while we're doing this? While, because obviously the roundabout is supposed to be done 2026 in June as well. So is that going to be overlapping, or are we, is there not going to be a lot of disturbance around the Josephine and River Road area?
Through the chair, thank you for the question, Counsel Mealy. Although there will be potentially overlap with that project, we expect minimal disruption to River Road. The major staging for that directional drilling of the pipeline will be on Josephine Road itself, without interruption to River Road, and will be going underneath the roadway, obviously. So it should have no impact to traffic directly. I'd like to circle back just super briefly to Counsel Haggard's question and CEO's response. Just that, like to add that the master plan process will position us to get to a proactive response position versus just a reactive. In addition to all of our additional asset management strategies we've been taking to put money aside to be able to do it, be able to combine multi-departments, especially when it comes to, say, streets and utilities and other, you know, a lot of these things have to mesh together very well, and to be able to prioritize it in a very systematic way is going to be very much more efficient, so.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Moving on to the Public Works service level report. So the Public Works Department encompasses a broad spectrum of responsibilities critical to the functionality of our city. This, very proud of this team. We operate and maintain most of the municipal infrastructure you see out there, including the streets, bridges, sidewalks, dams, dikes, our sewer collection system, our wastewater treatment plant. We treat our water, we distribute our water, we collect our solid waste, we maintain our fleet. It's the engine of our, of our city, so to speak, when it comes to a lot of the services we provide. I won't run through each of the respective areas, but you can see below the, the areas there as far as a lot of the programs we run, including, you know, snow and ice removal, street lighting, traffic line painting, et cetera. I'll run through briefly the Public Works kind of subsections. First, just the overarching Public Works administration, and some of the council expectations for that. Some of the successes we've had in the past year, excuse me, coming back to the expectations, just around ensuring that our city is maintained in a safe, reliable, functional manner is, is the overarching theme. Some of our successes include focused improvements in the last year on pedestrian safety and intersection safety and accessibility. And as I mentioned before, one of our biggest challenges is just dealing with very much aging infrastructure and trying to tackle it in a very systematic and approachable manner. The first couple budgetary items are around the Public Works administration. We've broken it a little bit explicitly further down, taking Mayor's comments into account. We'll, we'll maybe look at that a little closer when we get to final budget preparation. But wanted to point out that we've explicitly pulled out the Public Transit Service, as well as some of the training just from the overall administration to give a little bit more clarity and transparency. The first department I'd like to speak to is the Roads Department, and overarching their responsibility is to maintain our roads and sidewalks across the city. You know, adhere to all the safety standards and ensure that all roadways and sidewalks are safe for all users. Some of our successes in the past year have been around, again, some of the crosswalk enhancements for pedestrian safety at intersections. We've really increased the frequency of sidewalk inspections and repairs, and we've gotten much better, faster response time to complaints on road issues such as potholes and patchworks and those types of things. Overall, for the remaining departments, the council priorities, I've just tied them back to the council strategic plan, so I won't go through those, as council is well aware of them. The next sub-department is the Drainage Department, and this is the department responsible for all of our storm infrastructure and just the proactive management of maintenance on our waterways. The Water Department, this is our drinking water, so ensuring consistent clean supply of drinking water to all residents and businesses, and to maintain high-quality standards to all of our infrastructure associated with it. Some of the successes in the past year, we are back fully staffed with a full team again, and it's nice to have full complement bench strength for the, the water team. We also are working towards continued progress towards full-time remote radio meter monitoring, which will, again, increase efficiencies. Some of the challenges this past year, as council is well aware, we had the Mount Underwood fire in late summer. This really put us to task on our drinking water resources and infrastructure that is outside the city boundaries, but was very close to being overrun by the fire. We're taking a much closer look at how we can improve some of those facilities and try to reduce the risk to them. Moving on to the Sewer Department, so on the back end, this is the Collection and Treatment of Wastewater Across the City. And the standards are laid out for you there in the report. Again, similarly, one of the successes is coming to a full, full team of operators. We've recently hired a new wastewater operator as well, and the council priorities remain the same there as well. Solid Waste Department, responsible for collection of organics, solid waste, and recycling. Some of our successes, we've been consistently below the provincial average for contaminants and recycling, and we've improved the response time for cart replacement and repair with the addition of some additional staff in that area. Some of the challenges, again, like anywhere else, aging equipment, cart repair, delivery, et cetera. Fleet Services, this is the team responsible for maintaining all of our equipment across the city, anything from lawn mowers to garbage trucks to Zambonis, and ensuring timely repairs according to industry standards. Very happy to report once again that we're fully staffed on that team. It's been a while since we've had a full complement of mechanics, so now we're able to do a lot more work in-house, improving efficiencies and reducing costs. Like anywhere else, we're looking at the IRF program and trying to improve how we respond to asset management and if we can stretch useful life out of equipment and try to make better value for our tax dollars. With that, I will open up to any questions after very lengthy chat on Public Works.
Questions? Okay, not seeing any questions. Actually, I will just ask, not specifically to do with your department, but for the transit contract. It is up $140,000. Well, up more than that, actually, but anticipating revenues, which, you know, of course, we don't know for sure will come, so anticipating revenues up slightly as well. Is there a reason? I mean, I know they came to council recently, but that does seem like a slightly out-of-the-norm jump in our contract with them.
Thanks for your question. I believe when Andrew comes up, he'll be able to explain that a little more. I'm not aware of any big changes in, in the transit.
If I may just simply add, I believe from B C Transit, it was around some additional new data around ridership levels and expected increases in revenue from that, but perhaps Director McGiffrey can.
Thank you. That's great. And thank you very much for the thorough report. We will move on to Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to, to follow up on that question with the B C Transit, I'll, I'll have to look at the, the contract. So we do get a three-year operating agreement from B C Transit, and those, those numbers are just based on what's in that, that contract. So there is obviously different components, but I can follow up with that for the committee. As it comes for the Finance, Information Technology, Asset Management, and, and in the future, G I S, the Finance Department is a service department for the city. So a lot of what we do is, is try to provide information, support to a lot of the departments within the city. A lot of the focus in Finance is the budget development and, and capital and operating, financial reporting, utility billing, just a lot of property assessment and taxation, payroll, et cetera. It's, you know, the, the list is, is quite extensive to what Finance does, but it does support the entire city activity. With the Department for Asset Management, it is a fairly new department within Finance, and it's supporting the, the asset data to support all the other departments as far as the work that we need to do to make sure that our assets are funded, are renewed, and, and that, that clarity is provided to council and the public. With G I S, that, that is transitioning from public or engineering services to, to the Finance Department, as it is a department that will be providing service throughout the city. So it does align with the, the work that is being done currently within Finance and Information Technology. And it will also support the work that is being done within the Asset Management Department. So some of the successes in, in 2025 have been the Asset Management inroads. So we have been working closely with Public Works on their sewer, water, and fleet. That has been the focus over the past little bit, bringing policies forward to include in, in the approval for administration and improve some of the processes within Asset Management. The level of service presentation as far as it comes for council, as we see tonight, you have the details on each department consolidated with the revenues that are received for each department. So I did hear a question from you, Madam Chair, about the presentation. At the end of the presentation, we can maybe talk a little bit more so that we do provide that clarity, because it's important that, that council has the information to better understand what we're doing. So we want to make sure that we get that right. That, that, that comes back to that activity-based costing that we talked about over the last couple years here. It's important that we understand what these services are costing the community. So we do look at how we do present the financial plan a little bit differently with these level of services, but we can add some more information and include the traditional budget that we do provide council.
If I could just interject on that, I think where it becomes relevant is in departments where we are reallocating, you know, for instance, the manager of cultures salary in, across multiple fields representative of, of where she's spending her time. I think that's extremely valuable for us to do and for us to understand. But it becomes challenging just to track, you know, what does the budget of that department actually look like when we're seeing reductions in one area, additions in another? Just to make sure we have an understanding of if there are actual meaningful changes, or if it's just to do with reallocating resources where they're being used.
Thank you for that. So as, as we see with G I S, that is one instance, too. At the reading, for the first reading, we did present the allocations between the expenses and what has changed. I'll maybe highlight that when we talk about second reading, to make sure that there is that clarity there. And maybe expand on the notes that are included within that, that reporting note, if that is helpful. So with this, we've improved information communications internally. We have been meeting with each department, the assistant accountant and myself, to make sure that we do include each department, do a check-in. Every two weeks, we are ensuring that payroll, once that's complete, we were checking in to see where each department is as far as their current status. So it's been very helpful. It's been kind of a, a communication detail that, that wasn't present in my first few years here, but some good work by my staff as far as getting the information and listening to our budget managers to make sure that they can be agile throughout the year. Some, then those are, those are some of the system process improvements that we've made. And then looking at G I S this upcoming year, as far as a, a priority, we'll make sure that we have that new department set up so that we can provide good service to the community. So with our, with our budget, the level of service remains the same. There's no additional increases besides some adjustments, as mentioned with the G I S. So when we look at the, the increases, those are just increases that are based on what we anticipate for our contracts, whether that's our, our auditing contract or, or consulting services that we anticipate, our software licenses or our memberships, and the wages and benefits are based on, on contract commitments. When we look at G I S within the report, the information within there is just pulled out from the Engineering Admin. So that previously was approved in the Engineering Admin service. Now this will be in its own line item in the financial plans. When you look at the overall financial plan underneath Information Technology, G I S will now slot in. And then with our Information Technology Group, you know, once again, they do a lot of information behind the scenes. Even tonight, when we, when we have this meeting, it's broadcast based on the support from our IT group. So they are supporting with the phones across the city, they are supporting with the software, ensuring that our cybersecurity is up to date, continuing to try to make sure that we have no downtime. And I think they do a great job that, you know, often, you know, when we notice that things are down, they're, they're very reactive to make sure that we are operational. So some, some great work by the IT group. So with that, some of the priorities, we'll look at supporting corporate services this upcoming year with any website redesigns, supporting the G I S integration within the department. uh website redesigns, supporting the uh G I S integration within the department, and just continuing to make sure that we are very uh uh aware of cyber risk within the organization. So uh, that's kind of a summary of of where we're at uh as far as what our priorities are. But uh, our budget remains very consistent throughout uh the past few years with the support that council has given to the resources in that department over the past few years to to manage the I T needs of the uh entire city. So if there's any questions that the committee has, I'm welcome to uh answer them if I can.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the report. Um, and thank you so much for just the the point that the budget is at already in this year. Um, it is fantastic to have it presented in a way that's extremely transparent and and yeah, just helpful to have these ahead of kind of the next steps of service levels or of of budgeting. So thanks, Andrew. Okay, we will move on to fire. Welcome.
Okay, maybe I'll sit so I'm on in the camera here. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and Council. Uh, before you today is the level of service report for the Port Alberni Fire Department. Um, it's gonna look a little more uh robust than previous uh uh service level reports from the Fire Department. Uh, this is to answer some of the questions that were posed at last year's level of service, um, as well as a uh motion that was made at the subsequent regular council meeting of January this year. Um, as you can see, the the report is quite lengthy and a lot of um effort went into this, and I I just want to uh hold up um Deputy Chief Cross as well as firefighter Baker, who's in the galley here, and firefighter Booth, who also put on in a lot of work, and uh Finance Department, um, as well as Corporate Services Team for making it look a lot better than it did when I gave it to them. The report is intended to give a clearer view of what levels of service are at present, uh, what increases of level of service might look like, what decreases in level of service might look like. Uh, while there will be future reports that reference this report, um, there aren't any recommendations in tonight's report. Uh, the services are in the same order as are listed in the P A F D's services policy. Um, as you're already aware, the uh wages plus the Equipment Reserve Fund account for over ninety percent of the net cost of the Fire Department's operating budget in twenty twenty-five. Um, all the current staff are required to maintain current service levels in structural firefighting and fire prevention. Eighty-six percent of the twenty twenty-five IRF contribution was allocated to maintain current levels in structural firefighting and fire prevention. Twelve percent was for wildfire suppression and one percent for um the fire boat and one percent for auto extrication. Without structural firefighting and fire prevention, other services, if offered independently, uh, could be quite expensive. However, with those expenses already accounted for, the addition of these services is relatively cost-effective. Um, just a note, because um I've taken a lot of what was in that resolution back in January and included it within this report. But there are some parts that don't necessarily belong in a Fire Department fire um level of service report. Um, so there will be some um things that are absent from here that would have been in the resolution. Um, things like uh the cost of contractors to provide services such as confined spaces. If a independent company was to uh contract that out as opposed to using Portal Bernie Fire Department. Um, broombusters as another example is is maybe something that would be better held within a department that would look at kind of all invasive species within the the um city. And um although we do have some rough guidance given to us through the A C R D in their application for uh fuel management prescriptions, probably better to hear from the A C R D with regards to um what fuel prescriptions might be. And those would also be informed by the Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan, which is funded by uh the Fire Smart Program, which has just recently been um funded again through U B C M. So with that, I'll move down to uh page one seventy on the agenda, which um has the successes, challenges, opportunities and priorities. Um, so successes is uh during twenty twenty-five, we've held the line on full service delivery while call volumes and fire complexity increased. We've leveraged our relationship with Beaver Creek Volunteer Fire Department, Cherry Creek Volunteer Fire Department, and Sprout Lake Volunteer Fire Department to respond to every structure fire in the city. Uh, the value of this is immense with mutual aid departments arriving on scene as the second in apparatus seventy-nine percent of the time uh during the first uh three quarters of twenty twenty-five. Um, we did also, um, of course, council introduced, or we introduced and council approved the new fire control bylaw, which has since been implemented. Uh, we also reduced the level of service for medical first responder incidents without compromising patient outcomes. That was the dropping of um orange and yellow delay calls. Um, the new fire control bylaw, oh, sorry, that's the same thing twice there, trying to take credit twice. Uh, some of the challenges, um, meeting the Fire Safety Act obligations to investigate fires within five days has been a challenge when the single fire prevention officer takes leave. Um, meeting the expectations of new businesses has also been a challenge, again, with the single F F P O when they take leave. Um, the full rollout of a risk-based fire inspection framework, um, which is part of the new Fire Safety Act, has also been a challenge with the the present workload for that um that one individual. Um, and despite a reduction in level of service for medical first responders, this call type continues to to increase. Um, another challenge that we're finding is although we um have been utilizing the volunteer fire departments to come in, and they've been second on scene seventy-nine percent of the time, fifty-five percent of the time that we have a structure fire, the second in apparatus arrived more than ten minutes after the first. And where that's important, as you'll see in the body of the report, is the Works A P C rule, which says that um, within ten minutes, you need to establish a full RIT team. Um, and so we're we're at jeopardy, obviously, in those situations of not um fulfilling that, which means that we have to retreat from the building. Um, off-duty personnel do not respond with the same speed or numbers that was enjoyed by the city previously. Um, we are continuing to see signs of burnout. Those two can be correlated. Um, we're seeing an increase in work-related injuries where we um went, you know, in some cases, multiple years without work-related injuries. We're certainly seeing an influx of that over the past uh couple of years. Uh, live-fire training just simply does not occur within Port Alberni. Um, and now that we're, you know, it's so closely tied with those volunteer fire departments, it's become even more important that we have live-fire training so that we can train with those mutual aid partners to greatly enhance our safety and efficiency on the fire ground. Um, so jumping down to opportunities. Uh, the first step in enhancing the safety and functionality of the Portal Bernie Fire Department is planned in twenty twenty-six with the design and costing with the architect that was already um approved um allotment there. There's been some interest generated in areas that are not currently within a fire protection area to be covered by Portal Bernie Fire Department. This could be an opportunity for additional revenue to come into the city. Um, there's interest by A C R D staff to explore a jointly funded additional fire prevention officer position, which could mitigate our costs while increasing our level of service, and the same would go for a training officer. Um, and then, of course, coupled with that, um, the Regional Training Center, I'm told, is is on the books with the A C R D, um, though it's not presently funded. If we can move down. Council priorities, so implementing the new fire control bylaw was completed, Fire Master Plan was completed to share with council. Um, new level of service policy, confined space rescue equipment were all completed, and then we just have a replacement of a light vehicle that's scheduled for uh Q one of twenty twenty-six. And then some other priorities coming up, um, implementing a new records management system, which will allow us to draw um stats more efficiently, which would um help in things like the creation of this document. Uh, rolling out risk-based inspection compliance pro- program for local businesses, that's the work of the uh fire prevention officer. Um, assessing, planning and and costing out safe, safety and efficiency improvements for the fire hall. Um, and improving communications within the P A F D fleet with Starlink, and then a resumption of the Fire Smart Program now that it's been funded once again. And I think with that, I'll pause and take any questions.
Thank you very much. I will go to Counsel Haggard first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, comment and then a question. Into the area of wildland fire suppression, I think that's an area that we really need to strengthen. I think the Mount Underwood Fire in August really scared a lot of people, and we were just very fortunate that things happened the way they did. It could have been a lot worse. So I think that's one area we need, really need to focus on in the future coming up. Uh, our summers are only going to get drier and hotter, so we we need to be prepared. Uh, under marine fire suppression, you say they have a partnership with the port authorities. That partnership include any payment from the port authority to provide those services?
Uh, there's not currently a remuneration that happens between the port authority and the city. What there is, um, I suppose there's the the pilt, which is um partly a payment. And then also the uh harbor chief in the fire boat that we have is actually owned by the port authority, and that agreement um is is in part, part of that agreement is that we get access to that boat for uh firefighting purposes at no additional cost as well.
And I'm really happy to see that we are discussing the joint-funded Fire Prevention Officer and Training Officer. Those are things I've been trying to push, that we work more closely together as a region instead of separately. So thank you. Thanks for discussing it. And I just want to say, I know this report was a huge amount of work, but I learned so much by reading it. So thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Counsel Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was uh the question about the A C R D exploring it. That was touched on, and I appreciate that. So uh, that was my main question. Just I just want to say thank you to the members and here, thank you, Chief, again, and and just to say that it is a a very robust report and it is public. So um for the members of the public who uh want to come to a future meeting or would just like to know more about what the Fire Department does, that is a great report and shows the the um the opportunities and the challenges that that face our members. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, I, just going back to the the comment about a shared um A C R D potential um position. Uh, a few years ago, I think we were potentially sharing a building service like backfilling uh when we had um building inspector off. Do we compensate each other for that, or um does the regional district? Yeah, do we, we, do we share the cost of that? Do we compensate each other, or do we just provide it um as an equal service to each other?
Uh, yeah, that is an an agreement we we have with the A C R D for our building inspectors, and if one maybe we shut down, but uh I'll try and answer the question for at least council or the committee. Um, and it it's laid out in an agreement, and we we essentially keep track of change, and then we 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 charge each other and with a small administration uh fee. So we we pay each other if we use it. Uh, fortunately, neither the city or the A C R D has had to take large advantage of that recently, but that has, we have had to use that in the in the past when one of the other uh eight jurisdictions has been short.
Thank you. Um, and I know, kind of off-topic, but I would kind of hope that if we are looking at an additional fire prevention officer, that we would look at potentially the same type of agreement where the A C R D gets a fire prevention officer and we backfill each other, support each other, um, and allow the costs to offset, um, rather than we add an additional position. If we were gonna add an additional position to the Fire Department, I would think we would get better value out of adding a full-time firefighter. Um, not that a fire prevention officer is not a full-time firefighter, but um I'm not sure that that would be my top priority on where to add a position. So um, while I think that there's always value in sharing things with the regional district where we can, I I don't want us to jump to the idea of funding something just because it's in partnership with the regional district, um, and rather look at our service as a whole, make sure that we are funding our priorities first. Um, Counsel Patel or Counsel Soldar, any questions or comments online?
I know, none at this time. Uh, it's it's a fantastically responsive report to the uh request from council, and uh it's so much so that I think it's uh gonna take some time to digest. Um, and uh, yeah, thank you for all the work that you put into it.
Thank you. Uh, not seeing any questions from Counsel Soldar or Counsel Verbrugge. Um, could you speak to the uh reduction noted in the wages and benefits line of almost half a million dollars? I'm assuming that's not a real reduction, but uh maybe an overspend last year. Um, maybe we could get a bit more information on that.
I've been trying to manifest a half-million-dollar increase into that line, and somehow uh it it arrived, um, at least on this one piece of paper. Um, it it's actually just an error, I've been told, um, unfortunately. So so it actually should have read on twenty twenty-five, under wages and benefits, is uh more accurately approximately four-point-two million. And then that would make the total expenditures uh five-point-one-five-five million. So it was an error there, not uh actual increase nor a reduction.
Thank you. So um, assuming then there is no change to what are anticipated overtime budgets um or any other budget lines would be within the twenty twenty-six um service levels and anticipations. Okay, thank you. Um, I think that's all, Mike. Oh, actually, uh, when we were at U B C M, we had a a fantastic meeting with B C Ambulance, um, or B C A H S. Um, one of the takeaways that we noted, actually, and Mike, I'm not sure if you can speak more to this, but they actually noted that our medical call numbers had decreased significantly over the last few years, which of course is quite contrary to the numbers that we have that show significant increases and continual increases in our our medical call numbers. Um, i- is that their stats being wrong, our stats being wrong? Um, I I, you know, I do note, obviously, that um you're implementing a new records management system to make things easier to track. But do we have an understanding yet at this point of where that breakdown is?
Maybe I can start, and the C A O can can uh finish if needed. Um, so as I recall, last year as well, there was also a discrepancy, and um at that time, what we did is we redacted a bunch of information, but actually printed off every single call that we had gone on to essentially prove out that that our numbers were solid. Um, so I'm not exactly sure what happened um subsequent to that, or why their numbers continue to be skewed. Maybe uh C A O Fox has some comments.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, um, we did ask for a follow-up um um with uh actually Ecom on how they're uh transcribing the calls and providing them to the ministry. Um, again, I did uh talk with uh the chief when I got back, and uh he did verify they are tracking it the same way as we did last year. So uh, I believe we have to understand if uh when we are called off on a call, if both of us arrive, um, if uh they are taking that off, or how they are actually formulating the calls. So um, I don't have all the information at this point, uh, but we are digging into it more.
Thank you. Um, and you know, let's follow up on that, and I know we do have uh follow-up letters from U B C M drafted, so um, assuming that's an action item in there, but I I think it's, I have to assume that the numbers that we have are correct. Um, largely because it sounds like we are tracking them in a detailed way, but additionally, because I think that we all just recognize that the medical call volumes are taking up the vast majority of the Fire Department's time. Um, and and, you know, that pressure is getting more and not less. Um, but I I find it really concerning if the numbers that B C A H S have um shows that our community is having less and fewer and fewer calls. Um, you know, we've had a lot of conversations in this room about sending the right resources, um, you know, to the right calls. And while I think we're all very grateful to have the Fire Department available to respond, I think we can all acknowledge that the appropriate resource would be a properly funded B C ambulance service. Um, so I, you know, when they're making their decisions, and of course, we were there advocating for additional am- paramedic and ambulance resources into the community. Um, I think it's extremely concerning if they show that our community is declining in call volume. Um, so wherever that breakdown is, I mean, if we have specifics on the calls that we go to, whether we're called off or not, I mean, that's still a call that our fire whether we're called off or not, I mean, that's still a call that our Fire Department took time to leave the Fire Department, go to, you know, I don't care if they're called off or not. That is a call that needs to count. And that is a stat that should count for the resourcing that we need in our community. So I think it's really important that we, that we reconcile those numbers and use it as an opportunity to continually advocate for additional provincial resources into the community. So I'll look through these drafted letters that I know have been nicely drafted for me to sign and make sure that we've got that in there. But yeah, I think that maybe it's an intentional follow-up request on our end as well for an additional meeting if we, if we don't get an answer quickly. Not seeing any other questions at this point in time. Thank you very much for the report. And I know, as others have said, there's a lot of information in there. So I'm sure it will spur additional requests for information or, you know, further discussions as we continue on through this process. But thanks for taking the time and for all the people who did put time into the report. Would somebody like to move the receipt of all of these service level reports?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Moved by Counsel Mealy, seconded by Counsel Haggard. Seeing no more comments on the motion, all in favor. Carrie, none opposed. No correspondence today, so we'll go to new business. Item number one is the 2026 to 2030 Financial Plan Facility Capital Amendments for 2027 to 2030. Welcome back.
Greetings again, Madam Chair and Committee. This report summarizes the recommended amendments to the 2026 to 2030 Capital Plan for Facilities, focusing on projects scheduled for 2027 through 2030. These recommendations come directly from the facility condition assessments and include items that are safety-related, regulatory in nature, or operationally critical. In 2026, we strategically reduced capital requests to alleviate taxation impacts, deferring less urgent projects to future years. This report now brings those deferred items forward along with additional priorities identified through the facility condition assessment. The proposed amendments represent significant investment in major roof replacements, mechanical system renewals, and structural safety improvements. These projects are essential to maintain operational continuity, meet regulatory standards, and mitigate risk. While these projects remain unfunded, we will explore reserve contributions and grant opportunities to offset taxation impacts. A couple of key takeaways from my report are these projects address critical safety and compliance issues such as roof failures, structural cracks, and regulatory requirements for ventilation and water quality. Major capital pressures are ahead. Proposed increases include 889,000 in 2027, 1.63 million in 2028, 1.46 million in 2029, and 4.31 million in 2030, driven largely by roof replacements, mechanical upgrades, and structural reviews. Items have been strategically sequenced based on urgency and operational necessity to minimize financial pressure while maintaining service continuity. Finally, key projects include the fire hall roof and skylights, aquatic center roof and U V system, the multiplex air units and roof replacements, echo center generator replacement, museum roof and air handling unit, and a placeholder, as C A O alluded to, for the demolition of an industrial heritage center. These amendments reflect a focused investment in safety, compliance, and operational continuity. Strategic sequencing will help manage financial impacts, but alternative funding sources will be critical. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. And I will just say, thank you for making these changes and recommendations. It is great to actually be, you know, really making sure that things are in the budget where they need to be, even multiple years out. I know that there's been a lot of years of budgeting where we've made an attempt to do that, but haven't quite been able to get the time to look fully ahead. So I'm glad that we are getting the reports in place to be able to have a better idea of our, our facilities and what's needed to be done. Counsel Mealy and then Counsel Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for the report. The multiplex roof, I know I understand that, you know, you look back and now the multiplex is 25 years old. Doesn't seem like it, but it, it's in good shape. But is the roof a 25-year roof? Or is it that the reason why we're planning it for 2028 has just become, has become the end of its scheduled life? I guess we could call that.
Thank you for the question. The roof was severely degraded years ago, but we did invest some money into recapping and reseaming it to extend the life. But however, we've now extended it about as far as we're comfortable and maybe even further than that. So, and then we're kind of treated as roofs because there's different levels, so.
And then, of course, thank you, Madam Mayor. And of course, with the I H C, the old arena, we talk about arenas here. So I understand it's a place maker. I understand why it's there. Fully hoping in the next couple of years, we can take that off with all the hard work that's being done between staff and the I H S. And I know the I H S has done a lot in the last year in their organization. So I'm hoping that that can continue and we can have life in that arena, old arena, for a long time.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo, they have been working really hard. I've met with the members multiple times. They are going above and beyond to try to come up with mitigating strategies to ensure that the building is sustainable in the future.
Thank you. On that, before I go to Counsel Haggard, will there be, I think you mentioned, like, there's assessments being done. Will there be a report coming back to council in the near future for that?
Yeah, through the chair, I know that staff have been working with I H S. And when they're ready and they have a plan, their plan is to come to council and present it. Again, we do have time because they are dealing with some things now that needed to be mitigated, but getting true engineering reports and looking at creative or innovative ways to resolve some of the issues on the building.
Thank you. Counsel Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at page 177 on financial implications throughout the years, or for the next five years, for increases in taxation. For the years 27, 28, 29, there's fairly minimal increases in taxes. But in 2030, there is a proposed 10, over 10% increase. Would it make more sense to put money in reserves over those years? So instead of a huge increase in the year 2030, have steady increases of, say, 2% every year to allow for those capital increase, capital budget that we'll need in the year 2030? Just a suggestion or a thought?
I think that's excellent. I think C A O and Director of Finance are working on strengthening our reserves to offset those costs. Simply just bringing forward the recommendations in the facility condition assessment and then pushing them off as far as we comfortably can. But the time is kind of upon us to start to address them. But if the C A O wants to comment further, he might be able to elaborate more.
Sure. And then through the chair, again, we've been working on all of our assets and making sure we get the full picture to council. And as we're understanding that more, we are making recommendations on the different reserve to put in. With some of the policies and some of the additions that council has made over the last couple of years, we're seeing a difference in the reserve levels, especially on some of our facilities, where, especially on the lease amounts. So they do help considerably, also with our fees and charges. Looking at a percentage of that possibly going to the reserve. The practice that council has used over the past few years of the non-market change, also being able to feed into those reserves, those are ongoing funding points. They don't just stop at a one-time event. They continue year after year to fulfill that need of ongoing asset management. So as we get more information and are able to see that five- and 10-year asset management plan, we'll understand the true where we are and where we need to be. And then we can come up with a solid plan on how to get there.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Were there questions online? From Counsel Solda?
Madam Mayor, I would agree with Counsel Haggard about the reserves. Since I'm really big on reserves, but the, my question is, the money that we're looking at is taxation, not reserves, that it's coming out of. And maybe the possibility of hopefully grants, which the government's probably going to be tightening a lot of that up. But I'm just kind of curious on that. I would agree that if we had some reserves, extra money going into reserves, it would help mitigate that big increase in a few years down.
So I think for clarity, this report is giving us a clear understanding of what the costs are going to be. It is not yet looking at exactly what the funding source is going to be. So whether or not we're going to draw down reserves, whether or not we're, you know, going to be funded by Canada Building Fund or any other provincial or federal grants for these projects, just simply what the projects are and what the costs are that we're allocating in the five-year financial plan. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Okay. So thank you for that, Counsel Solda.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Thank you.
Counsel Petola or Counsel Verbrugghe, any questions? Okay, okay. Counsel Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This time, I'll move to the committee, the whole recommend councilman, the city of Port Alberni, 2026 to 2030 Financial Plan Bylaw Number 5138, to reflect the following items, 1 through 23.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Mealy, seconded by Counsel Haggard. Seeing no additional questions on the motion, all in favor. Carrie, none opposed. Thank you very much. And thanks so much for the report. All right, we will move on to item number two, Alliance of Resource Communities.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Though we're making progress in diversifying, we are still as much a resource-based economy as we are an aerospace center, a service center, a tourism hub, and touch wood, and hopefully soon to be known for our high-tech manufacturing industry. Anyways, given that there is still a portion of our economy that is resource-based, when my counterpart in Campbell River and her community's business advisory team formed the Alliance of Resource Communities, I looked to investigate what they were doing and with the support of the C A O. I mentioned earlier that Juan Mich, or Chief Counselor Ken Watts, had formed the Alberni Valley Forestry Coalition. I view the five calls to action that are identified in the alliance's report as completely in alignment with the strategic approach that is taken by the forestry coalition. The tactics may differ, but the strategic approach is completely in alignment. And then proactively, I'd like to address a question that the chair raised through the C A O about how the city's membership and support in the alliance would be used. So I, and how it would be used if council did not support a particular natural resource initiative based in another community. So I called my counterpart. Her view is that the alliance will stick to the five calls to action and let individual communities advocate for resource-based initiatives in their own communities. However, I did request that they would respond in writing as to how that would be handled. And I'm hoping to have that response before the committee's report goes to council next week. The alliance, although it was initiated by the city of Campbell River, it is also being led administratively by an organization called Resource Works. So I, the email that I sent requesting clarification on exactly how the membership and support would be used went to both parties.
Thank you very much. I think that this is a fantastic initiative. I think anytime we can, you know, bring our voices together to speak for common causes, we are stronger as multiple communities. It's very similar to the work that we are undertaking on R C M P costs for communities like ours that, you know, while we're very happy with our R C M P service, I would say we are unhappy with our cost per capita compared to other communities in the province being one of the highest. So we are bringing together communities to speak with one voice. I, I can fully support the five calls to action. And so I would love to support this initiative by, by having a membership and, and, you know, being a part of the good work that they are doing. My concern is I don't want to see my name or our community's name represented on a letter to senior levels of government without our knowledge or approval. And I say that because every community, I think, comes with a different approach in how they work with senior government. And I think that we have a very intentional approach that is relationship-based and is not blaming and is not, you know, we very much try not to be critical, but to lead with an understanding that operating at all levels of government is difficult and comes with trade-offs. So I, I want to be a part of this work. I want to support, I think, many of the initiatives that they are undertaking. But I want to do it in a way that is informed so that we don't see our name on a letter that we may not support going to the premier or other people in government. So I think that that's the specific question that I have. When there are advocacy pieces from this group, will members be automatically added to, you know, as supporters of the initiatives? Or will they come to our communities for some type of approval prior? And I think whichever it is, that's okay, as long as we are fully informed and aware before we make that decision. I'm not sure I have quite enough information to make that call today. So maybe if you can get, you know, like you said, prior to the, this coming back to council, if we could try to have a bit more specific details on the actual process when they do advocate to senior government. You know, I think that, again, there's a lot of alignment on the initiatives. It may just be that we want to send our own letter on the same topic in a way that we feel better represents the approach that we take with that government. So if we could get further information before, and maybe we just recommend that this come back to, or come to our regular meeting of council without a recommendation at this point, then we could make a more informed decision. Regardless, I want to support the general initiatives that this group is making. I want to be a part of the, a part of, you know, the information sharing and advocacy. I just want to make sure that, I think there could be differences in, in the style that we communicate. And I want to make sure that our community is represented in a way that, that is in line with our relationships. Counsel Mealy and then Counsel Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I totally agree. I think, you know, every community is different. We have similarities, but there are some things that we're not going to agree on. An opt-out would be great without, you know, prejudice or without, you know, causing issues with the other, other communities in the, in the Alliance of Resource Communities. So I'm with you on that. I think that definitely we should have an opt-out and just, and, yeah. Because, and I mean, every council's different, every staff's different as well. And I, and I do appreciate the approach that this council takes and this staff takes with higher levels of government. It's, you know, try to be as non-abrasive as possible to get our points across. And can't, can't really rely on other communities to do the same. So we just, we want to have that opt-out. So, and then just to ensure that, you know, it says what is our arc. And the second point says flexible, community-driven, and nonpartisan. And I think that's a big part for me as well. It's got to be nonpartisan. So, but I appreciate your comments, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I look forward to it with more information as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Deacon, and we look forward to the information.
Yeah, thank you. And I think more information, I think we'd like to look for ways to support it regardless, just figuring out, making sure it's in a way that we're comfortable with. Counsel Haggard.
with. Councillor Haggard?
Thank you, madam chair. I was going to say, I agree with your comments as well. We have a very unique way of dealing with higher levels of government, and we've been extremely successful, and they want to work with us because of that approach that we take. However, I do think it's important that we're a part of this, and as, as you mentioned, just to ensure that we're, if we're going to be part of a letter, we want to make sure that we support what that letter says. However, I do think we should be part of it. The five calls to action, Premier Eby was just speaking of that before I walked out of the door today, speaking to a lot of these things, so I think that they all, the provincial government supports these calls to action as well. And if we do join, and you're looking for a representative, I'd be happy to put my hand in the ring. Thank you.
Fantastic. You're, you're appointed.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Verbrugghe?
I wondered, can we still call ourselves, excuse me, a resource-based community? Because we have no sawmills, well, two of them, one doesn't work because we can't find wood, we have, we're not really taking advantage of the waterfront, and what else is there for it? There's no mining going on, or should we not change our attitude here a bit somehow? I'm not sure, just a comment.
I think it is a really important comment, and you're absolutely right. Our industry looks a lot different today than it, than it has in the past, for sure. I still very much view us as resource-based, but I recognize that in some cases, that's different types of resources than it, it used to be. Pat, do you want to speak to that?
I do, thank you. So we have Franklin Forest, Fraser View Cedar, Domtar, and Great Central Timber Milling, who are still very much engaged in the forest industry. Canadian Maritime Engineering is focused around the blue economy, and the, although the Colson Group, which is aerospace, now has, is the largest private sector employer in the valley at 431 people, Domtar still employs 330, and between the others, and assuming they do get up and operational, I think their, collectively, their numbers would be very close. So yes, you're absolutely right, we don't have any mining at the moment, or energy initiatives as in oil, gas, or coal, but we do have, aquaculture and agriculture are defined as natural resource-based industries under stats can. So we have a number of farms that, oyster farms, there's a finfish operation, there's a hatchery, those kind of things, so I do consider that we're natural resource-based. I also completely concur with council's concerns. Where I was employed by the provincial government before I came to the city of Port Alberni, and I was actually working very closely with the federal government, and when my immediate supervisors or bosses at both levels of government found I was coming to the city of Port Alberni, they said to me, will you please tell them to stop biting the hand that feeds them? And I think that successive councils, and this council in particular, have made phenomenal strides in the relationship with, especially with the province, but with both levels of government. And so I totally agree, we do not want to see our name on a letter that is blaming one of the levels of government for the problems that one other industry is having. And so the question that you raised and that went forward in the email, I mean, we, we asked if they were contemplating that before every letter that went out, that we would get notice, and we made the observation that that would probably be administratively really heavy. So we'd like to see another approach, we'd like to know for sure what it is, and we'd like to have it in writing.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for that. I think even if it was, you know, a, a period of municipalities being able to opt-out if they'd like to, you know, a few days or something, but you're right, we just do want clarity, I think, to understand exactly what the process is going to be, so that if a letter does go forward with our municipality's name on it, because council has made a decision to be a member, that we're not caught off guard and surprised by that, but rather that we recognize we, you know, are a member and, and that is what it means. So look forward to getting that information. For today, I'm just going to move that committee of the whole recommend this be brought back to council with additional information at the earliest opportunity. Somebody like seconded, seconded by councillor Haggard. And sorry, I didn't check online for comments, but I don't see any hands, so, not seeing any, so I'm going to pass you over. On the motion, all in favor. Carrie, none opposed, and thanks very much, Pat, for the work you've done on this, and look forward to discussing it more at our next council meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to question period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the committee, and for anyone participating electronically, please use the raise your hand feature. Would any members of the public like to ask questions today? Joseph?
Occupied with some schooling. Good evening, everybody, and my name's Joseph Laskosik. I live here in Port Alberni. Just a question of clarification. It's been mentioned at this meeting and one other meeting about controlled sidewalks or controlled safety, the one on Adelaide that's a bumpout. It's not a controlled or pedestrian-controlled spot, it's just a crosswalk with a bumpout. And I've heard it mentioned now twice, again, this evening, about a crosswalk at Ian and Johnson as being a controlled crosswalk. I live right there, there's a sign that hangs out in the middle of the highway on a post and a crosswalk. There's nothing to push to light it up, there's nothing there that says, please cross, there's, there's somebody on the crosswalk, we're warning you. It is strictly a sign hanging in the air and a crosswalk, very dangerous spot to cross. Don't, don't step out so you know somebody's stopping while in advance. So I'm not sure what you mean by a controlled crosswalk, because that one is definitely not.
Councillor Mealy's going to say, there used to be a flashing light there.
Yeah, I saw the flashing light in the summertime, actually, so I was, I'm under the impression that the buttons are there, because they do flash. And in fact, I mentioned that the last time I saw that, I said, oh, not all the lights are lit up, so they need replacement, and that's what I said to myself.
I walk it every day.
So let's go, let's go take a walk later.
I walk it every day, so I'll double-check, but that's good for clarity. Maybe they put a button on there recently, so that was just for clarification, but I'll have a look at that, and along with yourself, maybe we'll go for a walk. Second thing is, I'm just looking at, and it's nice to hear that you're working with the Industrial Heritage Society at coming up with something, but my question I want to ask is, it's presented this evening on an amendment to the capital, facility capital amendment for 27230, and it's mentioned on there, and it states in there, and again, I've heard this this evening, that it's called the Facility Condition Assessment, with a focus, and we heard this read, with a focus on unfunded, unfunded items that are safety-related, regulatory in nature, or operational, operationally critical. So that's what the Facility Condition Assessment Report kind of does. They also, under that Facility Condition Report, identified several high-risk items requiring, it says high-risk items requiring attention. Between 2027 and 2023, this report outlines these projects and their associated costs. Now, it says high risk. So I see items on there like lead, lead remediation, UV system upgrade, a roof replacement, hydronic system equipment, roof replacement, different things like that, that sound like there could be a safety issue. Replace ammonia plant, room fan, exhaust fan, things like that. Replace air handling unit, structural cracks, replace large exhaust fans. Those sounds like things that need attention, there's risk involved. And then thrown in there is something that sounds like it belongs somewhere else, demolition of the IHC of $2 million. So I'm just looking at that thinking, how does that fall under that risk thing? It's, is it a risk because we're demolishing, stay away from it because somebody might fall on you? So I'm not quite sure how that fits in this category, so that question's up.
I'll go to our CEO.
Yeah, thanks, and through the chair, I think if you go back in council meetings, you'll see when the facility assessment came, there were several roofs on this facility, some structural cracks, not just on, there's three buildings there, there's the Curling Rink, there's the IHS building, and then there's, currently the Sunshine Club uses one as a woodworking shop. On all three, there was deficiencies on the building. Council chose not to put those into the budget, so at that time, administration brought forward, if we aren't going to fund those items, then we would have to take down the building at some point. You could block it off, you could sell it, you can do lots of different things. Currently, the IHS is working towards doing something to make sure that the building doesn't come down. That doesn't mean that that negates all costs. So again, where we put out in year five, it's to make sure the public's aware of it, make sure council's aware of risks that are coming. If nothing happens to the building, council may decide to sell the area, they may decide to demolish it, they may decide to block it off and make sure that nobody can enter the site as best as we can. They all have different risks associated with it, but in trying to be prudent on our financial planning, if we know something either has to be fixed, and if we aren't going to fix it, it would be better to remove it or deal with it in a different way, and that's what this is highlighting. Now, with IHS intention to come forward, we know that they're going to be coming forward soon. Hopefully that mitigates some of these costs, and then we also have to talk with the Sunshine Club and the Curling Rink to see on those. Unless IHS comes forward and says they're going to fix the whole building, which I'm not, I'm not sure through our discussions that is what's going to happen. Each building, in a previous study, was shown that each building can be treated separately. So with that understanding, we can move forward in multitude of ways, but what we have to do is start having a capital project on there so we can refine costs as we move forward and it gets closer to the time when we have to either repair or make a decision on the building.
Good, thank you. So again, it's just clarification of the risk thing. If it's stated in there, here's the things, and I know in the past there's been reports on what it was, a roof here, a crack here, it doesn't state that here, it's just a demolition cost, so it seems a little, yeah, it just seems a little out of place for this one. If it's stated in here, here's the risk factor, and here's some costs associated with that, this one is a demolition, it just, yeah, it just seems like it's an odd placement for what's called at-risk, and, and that's what the whole thing was for. So, yeah, just the demolition part just seems it should be something else knotted within this one, that's, yeah. So I understand that it's been looked at, but the way it's worded, it just seems like an odd place, because nothing else is, it's all things that need attention. One, another one that's in there that's a little odd too, is painting of cladding at the, on a building, safety risk. So again, it's just a clarification of where things should be placed, so it just looks, kind of makes more sense, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public? Come on forward, Geoff.
You're wondering why I'm here, I'm a longtime resident of Port Alberni, and I usually stay up late at night to watch you guys, so I'm one of the few, so decided, decided to come live. But I just got a couple of comments or questions, I don't know if you can answer them or not. I had a hard time hearing back here at some points, but at the FIFA presentation, there was, you, you talked about, you know, making decisions and come up with a plan. You know, we seem to be in a catch-22 position here, where we're looking for your support, and we're not going to get any support from, well, I shouldn't say any, but it's going to be very difficult to get support from organizations, or sponsorships, or donations, unless we have the solid backing of the, of the council, because it's your facilities. So that's one, one comment, I guess I want to say, you know, I don't know if you want to talk about it before your next council meeting, on how we could support each other in, in our endeavors to say, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll support your fundraising as, on condition that you raise, you know, exponential funds, and, you know, it gives some comfort to some of the people we approach, because that's going to be very difficult, and we all understand, I think we all understand the short timeframe.
Yeah, I'll just say, Geoff, that we have written a formal letter of support for the initiative, and I think within that letter, we, we noted that we don't have financial resources available, but we, we did provide a formal letter of support for the purposes of raising funds and, and getting approvals in place as a, as a first step. So I feel we have given that support to get going, and if that's not satisfactory, then I think we would need to be, we would need to have an updated request brought to us, maybe that's clearer, but we have given a, a letter of support and a letter.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we, you know, I, I heard some discussion about some of the hardships the kids would suffer, if, you know, if we had to shut down the field for a month or so. I look, I reflect back on some of the positions that the city's been in. We've shut down number, the arena twice, Echo Pool was shut down for a length of time. I know we had wildfires, two wildfires, Echo Pool, sorry, I mentioned Echo Pool, but we've had some hardships that we've had to deal with, and I think to disrupt some of our kids for a month or two is not such a hardship as we think, because it'll bring a benefit to the community as a whole if we, you know, if we do do a little bit of suffering for the children. So I leave that with you, and also, you know, we talked a little bit about legacy, we, we don't know whether it's going to be a legacy fund, but if there is, you know, I know there was mention of a scoreboard and, you know, some other stuff, you know, there's, there's improvements that can be, come from the legacy fund. So I'd leave that with you, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Geoff. Would any other members of the public like to speak? Okay. Motion to adjourn from councillor Mealy, seconded by councillor Haggard. On the motion, all in favor. Carrie, none opposed. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming.